Today is Tuesday, January 25th, and we are here for our briefing meeting. On the agenda today, we have quarterly reports for school board advisory committees. And we will begin with District Advisory Council, Scott Hertz.
Thank you for the opportunity. Thank you for the opportunity to give you an update on what the District Advisory Council's been doing. First, before I talk about the prepared remarks, I want to thank the Board Attorney and your staff, and Board Member Patrica particularly, for supporting us in our requests and efforts to find a proper way to use the Zoom communication chat tool in compliance with the Florida Sunshine laws. As you know, my committee is very large. We have over 100 people, or just over 100 members on the committee. And the chat tool has proven to be a significant benefit to us. We are capturing it and including it with our minutes. And it's definitely enabling us to provide more opportunity for feedback. We get not only great questions and comments and feedback from our members, but it provides staff an opportunity to directly address those questions. And then if necessary, have the presenter speak to it or show and document things. So I think it's really a great tool, and I really appreciate that we've all been able to work together to do that and yet remain within compliance with the Florida Sunshine regulations to do this. So I want to say thank you for that very much. In terms of the formal report, on October 27th, the District Advisory Council met and discussed the redistricting. We had a detailed presentation on that. It may be, it may be useful to look at that. I realize it's 10 years from now before you're going to really do that again, but you know, it might be useful to take a little synopsis of that and stick it in the file for 10 years for 20, I guess, 32 or 2031, when we look at that again to see some of the thoughts and comments. People had about what type of information they wanted. It reminded me a little bit of when we did the proximity plan. We got some of the same types of questions from the membership. And I think, you know, given that it's a decided issue, I don't think the specifics are as important as the types or categories of questions and the information people want. And that may be able to help Board and staff shape their messaging and information that they provide out when you do that type of work. And certainly, I think those questions will apply again when the proximity plan comes back to be discussed. And that's documented for you in the report, so I don't think I need to read that, but I'd be happy to answer any questions anybody has about that. As well as our November 17th meeting was on the quality points. And I think this is another great example of how this committee that you guys have put together, or you ladies and gentlemen put together, to assist you with getting feedback. There were direct actionable results that came out of that. So I'm sure you all recall that there was a change to the way that grades are calculated with the quality points methodology, and it caused some consternation for people as they became aware of it and how they were made aware of it. And our committee gave some very specific recommendations on how that should be communicated. Your staff did a wonderful job, particularly Ms. Canice Alvaro, Lori Hutchins, and Lori Brooks, all did a wonderful job of working together in presenting scenarios. They actually took spreadsheets and made like simplified tables of different grading and grade points, like what happens if you get a 67 on this, on this exam, but you had As's on your other two exams, and how that all works. And they presented a number of scenarios that I know they recorded all of that. They've posted a link to that on the district website, as well as they've made a short video. So now you have some short videos, both on the district website and on the district YouTube channel, that explain this. And we went through how that messaging can be done and explained, as well as in newsletters. Suggestions also came of our committee to involve students more and have student-led conferences in regards to understanding the grades. I mean, certainly for the overwhelming, overwhelming vast majority of students, the quality points would end up in resulting in a higher grade point average, if you will, than they had before. But there are a few isolated cases where it could go the other way, and it's important people understand that. And then interestingly enough, there were questions from parents and educators of the upper-end students, right? Students that usually do very, very well, that were concerned that it became something of everybody gets a blue ribbon, right? You don't want grades to just be a participation sport. We want, we want people to be recognized for when they go above and beyond. And so there were discussions about that as well. That was fed back to staff and then incorporated into how they didn't believe that really impacted. They went over the weighting of the advanced courses and how that still showed their benefits and how that averaged out. So I think it was more of a method of, it was a very complex subject, and I think your staff did a great job of breaking that down. And again, you got this information back, and we've seen the results of it. It came up that they, that they went and took action on those recommendations. They made the videos, they've done that. And it's our understanding from, from follow-up with staff that I had when we had the meeting with the superintendent, that Ms. Alvaro said, actually, the questions we were asking, our committee was asking, were the same as what they were getting from the parents and the same as what you guys got as board members, so they were prepared with answers. So I just wanted to hold that up to you as an example of the type of synergy and collaboration that this committee has provided for you. We'll certainly continue our efforts to do that. This Wednesday, we have coming up our meeting, I say this Wednesday like it's not tomorrow night. Tomorrow night, we have our meeting coming up on the Code of Conduct. Last year, that was a pretty lively meeting. Staff is going to open up with a presentation of some of the recommendations that were made by DAC and how they were incorporated or non-incorporated, and how they affected the Code of Conduct, and how that feeds back to you. So I would expect that you will get a good summary and synopsis from that report to review, and I would encourage you to review our minutes and that information before you make any decisions on the Code of Conduct. And without us then, ready to answer any questions that you may have.
Ms. Patrica?
Yeah, no questions, just appreciation for the work that you do corralling that entire large group. But in addition to that, I think I've mentioned to the board before that if you have questions about the quality points, I have pointed parents in the direction of your, your meeting, because the questions came directly from parents for the most part. And the thorough explanation that was received by staff as a result of those questions really generated a deeper level of understanding for me. Now, I've, I've sat here at this dais and listened to staff present to me, but I had a far deeper understanding after attending that DAC meeting. So yet another example of the fact that DAC has changed, and it's really positively impacting the district. So, thank you, Scott.
My pleasure, and I'm glad we're able to work with, with the board and provide that type of feedback, that it truly is a two-way street. And I work with Dr. Spiro, we were just talking about that. We make a real effort to come back to DAC and say, here's what you accomplished. Here's which of your suggestions were implemented. Here's demonstrable things that the district is doing differently because of your feedback. And I, we see that keeps encouraging people to be more proactive and to take more efforts. And people show up having read the presentations. It's, it's not the same committee of, gosh, seven or eight years. I forget how many years I've been doing it, but nine, I think now I've been doing it. It's definitely a different committee than it was nine years ago.
Yes, and thank you for that. Ms. Jordan?
I was just going to say thank you very much, and I appreciate it because I had heard, had listened to this prior, and exactly what you said. I had to go back and I had to look at all of that as well to get that better understanding. And I believe that you're doing better, because when people feel valued, they do better. So I think that's really, it shows, and I appreciate all that you do.
I wholeheartedly agree, and that's why I was thanking Dr. Spiro, because we've, we've made a real effort to keep reporting back, to not just do it once, but then when something is changed or implemented. Dr. Spiro's done a great job of that. One of the other big ones, if you remember, was the Google Classroom. You know, out of our committee, and we didn't necessarily generate all the tips, but because of our committee, a tip sheet was generated on best practices for Google Classroom. And then Dr. Spiro came back and shared that with the group and how that was done and disseminated through the district. And I think that really is encouraging people to be more proactive. And I know there were some comments made at the superintendent's meeting that some committees are struggling for membership. I think that's the message you need to give people. If you want people to volunteer their time and commit their time, I think by showing them that their time is valuable and that it makes a difference, I think that's the best way to get people involved.
Absolutely. Any other comments, Dr. Savage?
Yes, I just wanted to say, you know, I've, I've been, I've served in DAC many, many times as an assistant principal, as a principal. I've been a formal member, and I can tell you from my experience with multiple administrations here, this is as good as it's ever been. Very much engaged, it's a tremendous, and it's a massive group, but it's very focused, very results-oriented, the feedback is very, it's just excellent. So if anyone hasn't had a chance to really see that piece, it really is a powerful apparatus. One of the messages that doesn't often get told about DAC is, the structure is for it to dovetail with the SACS. The idea that at the individual school advisory, it's a really, it's an, it's an important mechanism to try to get information all the way from all the schools, all the way up and all the way back. So that two-way piece. But that doesn't happen without excellent leadership. I can just say, you know, the partnership between, I mean, Scott, obviously, but also Jeff, and then all the people who contribute to it on a meaningful basis, as well as that virtual side of it. That is, there's no small part of it, that through the pandemic, we've been able to keep it going with the type of robust feedback they've had, because that mechanism has been permitted. So just wanted to really piggyback what's already been said, but just very, very impressive, and that's over two decades here. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, everybody. Have a great deck.
Thank you very much, and you also. I'll just take a moment to check and see if Mrs. Gittens is with us on the phone. Mrs. Gittens?
Yes, ma'am, I'm here.
Welcome. Thank you.
Thank you. I bet you, I bet you got the warmth in the air.
Can you repeat that, please? I did not hear what you said.
No, I just said, I heard the warmer than me, 48 degrees.
Oh, yes. We're warmer than you. Be well.
Good afternoon, Dr. Savage, members of the board, staff. Thank you for the time here today. And, you know, Mr. Hertz is always really hard to follow up. So, you know, as much as I always like going first, I do like being in front of him. Our Construction Advisory Committee, we've had basically, essentially, two meetings since our last briefing, with, you know, December being off. Our focus has been on renewable energy sources. And in our November meeting, we talked quite a bit about a company called American Independent Power, who provides an independent power generating, generating system. It's kind of like, you know, a large Conex or type of unit that you can come and kind of drop outside. It is solar-based, and then it has some solar panels, but it uses that to replicate and produce more power, and then, and it's essentially a really large battery at the point. It's kind of some new technology. They're using it throughout the country in relatively large-scale applications, you know, hospitals, the large, you know, facilities. And, you know, it's kind of going through, and they're expanding their platform, they're expanding their footprint, looking down here and seeing if schools are at appropriate use for them. And they have some different sizes and modulations, and they do have the size that would be appropriate for, you know, things like high schools of that nature. It's really interesting technology. A lot of it is still proprietary, so you won't get to learn too much information about it. And some of our board's feedback was that, you know, we'd like to go basically see one. And I think the closest available installation, you know, it's like, have you done that here type of conversation, I think is in the middle of Georgia or somewhere outside of Atlanta. So that seemed a little bit, a little bit out of our reach there. But we would like to kind of, just kind of see what's going on and see that, you know, technology expand. And when they do come to the area, it is, it's a very interesting and unique way to get off the grid, so to speak, and it'll also do things like remove the necessary generators that were required at school, because it is a self-contained system, so that if, you know, the power goes down, that, you know, it's still running at full capacity and has enough battery capacity essentially meet the requirements that the generators currently meet. So there would be some cost savings and not needing some redundant equipment, you know, backup power and things that you currently do now. And then, you know, then becomes the cost of the installation and how much to get out of it and what's maintenance. So that was a really interesting piece of technology to look at, and we want to kind of delve into that a little bit, a little bit further. At our January meeting, I was a little under the weather and unable to attend, not the COVID thing, it was the other simultaneous stomach flu that was going around. But we continued the renewable energy discussions on, and on solar. So we brought in Bow Solar, based out of Cape Coral. Mr. England kind of brought them to the committee, just to show what straight-up solar could do, and there's some cost analysis that they can do with, you know, the amount of panels, the amount of generation that could be provided versus, you know, the payback and the life cycle expectancy of that equipment. So I'm kind of going off of some notes. I wasn't at this particular meeting, but the feel that I get from a lot of the committee is that, you know, we're generally pro-solar, where it helps, where it can do it, and where it doesn't put a hole in the roof. You know, there's a lot of square footage, and, you know, the district owns a lot of properties. Putting thousands of holes in a roof in a hurricane region is never a good idea, and they're very, pretty united about that fact. But there are some other opportunities out there, things like bus ramps, parent drop-off ramps, covered parking. Are there other parts of the site that we can explore? Almost as bad as putting holes in your roof is wasting a whole bunch of real estate, because that's quite expensive in and of itself. So are there some of the easier low-hanging fruit that we can do to at least kind of pull off some of that burden at peak times and put back into the system? So I think the committee did recommend to engage that company to at least do kind of a study to say, hey, what would just doing these little parts and pieces do to your overall energy bill? What's the life cycle expectancy and the cost analysis of that? So, I mean, with that, I'm really kind of wrapping up and opening up questions and, and open to any feedback, I guess. And Ms. Morgan, if I missed anything in January, please fill us in, because I'm kind of doing the best I can from the notes I have.
You're doing a great job. And, and I just want to emphasize that the committee is excited about taking on something new and bringing different people in to talk about the kinds of opportunities out there to lower our costs and that kind of thing. And then the good thing about the Bow, B-O-W, is that they offered, and I think I mentioned this in a previous board meeting, they offered to come in and for free, take a look at some of our properties and see what opportunities there were with respect to solar. So the group is, I think that's where they're spending all of their time this year, and they seem excited by, by the work. So yes, thank you very much.
Yeah, and we want to see what kind of lands available, you know, retention ponds. They kind of seem like a low-hanging fruit as well. I know it kind of can be a problem for maintenance at points, but, you know, that's, it's just real estate that's probably underutilized right now.
Thank you. Ms. Vaughn?
Yeah, that's, that is exciting, because I'm very interested in this renewable energy. As a school district, we need to be proactive and, and be on the cutting edge of some of this. What might be something, it just popped into my head as you were talking, maybe one of our new schools become a prototype green school. I mean, like, the whole nine yards, not just with the kind of energy, but everything that needs to be done to combat climate change and to promote our very delicate Florida ecology, you know, kind of like a very small version of FGCU and some of the things that they did. And I guess they started that like 25 years ago, so they were thinking about it. And, and so, just, just something for, for the future. Maybe we have a school right now that could be easily transitioned to that, or one of our schools, and have it be a model school for this, and, you know, get rid of all the plastic bottles and all those other things, plus all the things you've mentioned that are possibilities in, in construction as well. So, you think you're going to have more presentations on similar?
Yeah, we're kind of focused on that for the next few months. I'll have to look into our upcoming agendas to see what we actually have coming scheduled for February. But yeah, it's kind of been a theme this year with, with some things going on, what we can reduce to, do to reduce our footprint and our energy costs, you know, in general. Just look at the broad picture, any little part and piece that comes in is a welcome discussion.
Yeah, and I think it's, it's always great when you can save money, but when you can save money, plus be a good example to people, especially again, in our Florida ecology that is so delicate, I think it's perfect for a learning environment. So, thank you.
Ms. Morgan?
Yeah, so I would just say that I think what's happened is that somebody brought an idea, and the group got so excited, then somebody else brought in an idea, and now people, you know, they haven't thought in terms of us using their knowledge for the school district, and that's really percolated. In addition to what you said, it's not only about schools going forward, but one of the things that came up was that we may have excess land that we don't want to sell. So, you know, pieces of lots, because we may want to hold on to that for solar purposes. So, yeah, there's, there's a lot that may come out of this over the next year going forward in terms of planning and maintenance and, and new schools. So.
Any other comments? Well, it sounds very interesting and something to keep an eye on, and thank you very much. Moving right along, Continuous Systemic Improvement Committee.
Good afternoon, board members.
Good afternoon.
Yes, okay. Mr. Rasmussen is unable to be here today, so it's my pleasure to give you our quarterly report. We've had two meetings since the last report. In our first meeting in November, we were very lucky to have Lori Brooks and her team with Sherri Wenzel and Leisha Roy come talk to us about the Comprehensive Mental Health Initiative within the district. It generated a lot of discussion within our group. They talked about the history of the state statute, about some of the requirements, and then what is being offered at every level of school within our district. And there was a lot of discussion about making sure that parents have that information available to them and really understand what their options are in terms of mental health, particularly the past two years. We know the stress that, that our students have been under, our families have been under, and our staff. So looking at not just what's available for our students and families, but also what are the options for our staff. So we had a lot of discussion around that. After that, the group decided to have a December meeting, which we don't normally have, but they wanted to talk about some possible recommendations around mental health and also around the technical colleges. They did not come to a conclusion around those as of yet, but we did have a lot of good discussion around that. So we're looking forward to our next meeting, having some, some very specific recommendations to bring back to this group. And our January meeting happened to be the day that we had to have all of these in, so we'll talk about that next quarter. But we did have a presentation with Brian Mangan and talked about Code of Conduct. So that, again, generated a lot of discussion, which we'll tell you about next time. So any questions, I'll be happy to answer.
Ms. Patrica?
I don't have a question. I just want to tell you that, without mentioning any names, I had a rather vocal critic of the school district for a period of time apply to be on CSI. And I-
And I appointed this person to CSI, and with the understanding that much of the criticism was based on misinformation. And I had the sense that if this person had access to staff and really got to see what you do, it would be an enlightening opportunity for this person. And I think it took two meetings for this person to take a 180-degree turn and become a strong supporter of the district. And I have to give you credit for that because you're, I mean, you're the one constant, you know, from staff that's at every single one of those meetings, and we appreciate what you do for us, but you should hear that outside feedback as well.
Thank you, I appreciate that. Thank you.
Absolutely. Any other comments? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. Can you guys hear me? Awesome. So just good afternoon to all the board members. Superintendent Savage. So just touching base real quick on our meeting from October the 25th. It'd be just a continuation on what we went through. We talked about the rejection pot process. We also talked about the mission statement. We worked on revising that. Then our last meeting that we had on November the 29th, we received detailed presentation from the social and emotional learning supports for the students of Lee County. We discussed revisions to the mission statement, and we actually are going to take a vote on the mission statement. We had really good participation from our members, and several of them gave feedback on what should be the appropriate mission statement for the Curriculum Advisory Committee. And I'll explain in detail why we made the decision to change the mission statement. We had two or three members, community members, present who gave input on the instructional and medial media materials challenge form. We're also going to be looking at that in our next meeting. There was a vote to continue to meet virtually in our January meeting, so we're going to meet virtually coming up on January the 31st, and we're going to take a vote on the mission statement. We're going to take a vote on the, or we're going to look at the challenge form to simplify it. We are also going to review the Robert's Rule of Order as we have new members coming in to the committee, as well as we're going to review how scope and sequence for a course is created, evaluated, and implemented. So just speaking from where, with the mission statement, we wanted to simplify the mission statement to really reflect what people understand about the Curriculum Advisory Committee because we've had a couple of impassioned discussions where we generally believe that there's a misinformation of what the purpose of the Curriculum Advisory Committee is. So we're going to review the Robert's Rules of Order. Just speak about decorum. It hasn't been that, trust me, it hasn't been as impassioned as some of the meetings you guys have probably had yourselves. But I think it's important to really understand that the community, as well as members who work in the school district, we all have a shared interest in seeing that the kids get the best curriculum possible to help them succeed as post-secondary learners. So that's why we are going to review the mission statement, but then that's also why we're going to have a review of decorum and focusing on what's most important, and that's the kids. So without further ado, if you have, if you guys have any questions, I'll gladly try my best to answer them.
Board members, any questions? Comments? Ms. Jordan.
I would just like to say thank you, and I think that that applies to a lot of times to the advisory committees. What is that mission and what are you there for? So I think it's good to review that because sometimes we forget why we are there. So thank you for that.
Thank you, I appreciate it. Any other questions?
No. Mrs. Givinelli.
So I'm the liaison on that, and so I just have to thank you because you're the one that saw the vision that the mission statement needed to be changed and brought that up. And it's been a work in progress since, you know, the beginning of when you started as well, when I started, we were both brand new. So I just think, and commend you that you saw the need and you're, you know, and you're trying to make a difference. So, you know, I just, I think that's really important because it's to help us stay focused, and I think that it's important that that's what these advisories are for, you know what I mean? So I just wanted to say thank you.
No, and I appreciate your support. I appreciate all of you guys' support, and we'll keep doing what we have to do to make it the best circumstance for our children, and we'll just keep moving forward from there.
Thanks.
Thank you, that's exactly what we need. Thank you very much.
Good afternoon, all, greetings to you all. It's my pleasure to provide the Equity and Diversity Advisory Committee quarterly report for November through January. The committee received additional information in November about the school board's direction for board member residency, area redistricting. The presentation was offered by the district's chief of staff, along with director of planning, growth, and capacity, our school board attorney and general counsel, and our director of diversity and inclusion. The presentation provided information related to the board member area redistricting plan, and we had further deliberation conversation regarding that. Through that deliberation conversation, the EDAC committee approved a motion to recommend to the committee the topic of a seven-single-member district as a future agenda item. Additionally, committee members made recommendation to consider alternative map number seven as presented during the conversation related to the board member area redistricting plan. During our November meeting as well, the committee moved to recommend that the board move forward with disseminating the letter that was drafted to the governor in reference to board member Patrica. EDAC does not meet during the month of December, and our January meeting was rescheduled due to a scheduling conflict with the superintendent's search, but we will have a presentation by our coordinator for community engagement, Dr. Adam Malloy, regarding community and community engagement. Additionally, future presentations will be regarding the teacher recruitment and retention strategies, as well as the student code of conduct and corrective actions, and that is the report as presented. I'm available for any questions.
Any comments, questions?
I have a comment, but it's not necessarily for Dr. Blakely. It's for, I guess, all advisory, and I wonder, you know, because I was just speaking about, they were speaking about mission statements, does it not behoove us as board members to ask of them things that we have concerns of, that we would like for each of the committees to look into for us or to bring back recommendations? Because I don't think that that happens. I think it used to happen. I remember it happened a while ago, but I don't think that that has been happening. So when I look at it, are they planning, are they discussing what they should be doing for their next presentation? Or are we asking, sending things to them, saying, can you look into this for us or into this to give us some kind of guidance? I just wanted to bring that up to see if anybody else feels the same way.
Well, yes, Ms. Patrica.
The way I've always done it in the past was to work with the chair of whatever committee to which I was assigned or I chose to come up with topics and help them understand what the board was talking about. But let's say you're construction and I'm curriculum, and I want construction to look into something, then I would bring it up at the table and ask the board to direct you to have the committee do that. So typically, it's the individual liaison sort of discretion, but it's always tied to the work of the board and the strategic plan. And I have it really easy because we have EDAC, and so EDAC really decides. But, you know, I bring up ideas with EDAC as well based on what we're seeing happening at the table. So.
Thank you.
Good job, Dr. Blakely.
Yes, we appreciate you. Thank you very much. And finally, Finance Advisory Committee.
Hello. My chair was unable to attend, so I am here to present in his place. In November, the planning department came and talked to the Finance Advisory Committee. They talked about impact fees and planning with the county and things. There was some concern with, from the Finance Advisory County of things that the possibility the school district is taking on that they believe should be county-type things, like traffic lights and things like that. So they asked that planning look into all of the contracts and see if we couldn't get something adjusted with that. In December, the maintenance department, Mr. Jimmy Thompson and Mr. Frederick Grass came in and spoke to us. The committee was quite impressed with the way the maintenance department is working and answered all of their questions. They did give them some things to think about. They were asking how the work order system worked, how did maintenance know when there were issues that arose and things, and they were explaining how the schools put in the work orders. And they suggested that maybe they have some kind of a mechanism where students or staff or parents could do some kind of reporting if they saw something that needed to be fixed, and so the maintenance department said they would take that back and see if there was something that they could do to make that work so that the work, the orders weren't the only way they knew something was going on at the schools. Their January meeting took place after the timeline for this, so that will be reported in the next meeting.
Thank you. Ms. Givinelli.
This actually is not directed at you, but the minutes that we have here are from 2020, so it's not, it's not accurate. This is, it's not anything you talked about now, this is like old minutes.
I just noticed that when I pulled up the things, and I believe my chair may have sent the wrong things in, so we'll need to get the right things there.
So can we get this updated and then maybe the accurate copy sent us?
Yeah, I don't see any problem with that at all. I noticed, I made a note of it as well when I was reading through it. They were from 2020 and the summer months of 2020, so it just didn't match up. But we'll get it resolved and then work with the attorney to make sure it's published the correct way, and certainly the board will have that as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Fisher.
Yes, Ms. Gittens.
Yeah, I just wanted to make a, can you guys hear me okay?
Yep. Yes.
All right. I just wanted to say thank you to the Finance Committee and the fact that they are very involved in what is going on in the district, and some of their concerns have been brought forward. And one of the things was, you know, asking for information and getting it in a timely manner. And I believe, you know, we're working on that and getting them information that they need and that will answer their questions. But I thank you to the committee, they are very involved and offer some great suggestions, and we appreciate them.
Thank you, Mrs. Gittens. Board members, any other comments or questions?
Thank you.
Ms. Ledger.
Thank you.
We appreciate it. Next, on the agenda, we have policy briefings and first reading and pre-briefings. Attorney Bruno.
Thank you, Ms. Fisher. See, Ms. Brooks is coming up. So we have two policies. One is suicide prevention. You had a pre-brief on that before. And then we have the companion policy 4.22, which is the mental health and well-being. They kind of go simultaneous and together. These policies are reflective of some changes that occurred, Senate Bill 590, as well as some requirements from the Department of Education. I think the board has had an opportunity to review those policies, and Ms. Brooks and I are here to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you. The suicide prevention policy 4.221. Any questions or comments for staff?
The changes that were made are highlighted in yellow based on the discussion that the
Well, I don't see any hands. I appreciate the changes. I don't see a yellow highlight, but I do see strikeouts, and so I appreciate the adjustments that were made based on the conversation at the pre-briefing.
Oh, if you look at the administrative content, which is the exact same document, but it's the Word version, you will see the yellow highlights on that.
Yeah, that's what I'm looking at, but it's not, it's showing crosshocks, but it's not showing yellow. I can't get it.
Yeah, I'm seeing the yellow highlights and crosshocks on the 4.221 and the yellow ones, but not on the other.
Thank you. As long as you have access to it, that's the most important.
Okay.
Thank you. So at this time, Madam Chair, I would ask a consensus to move this forward to the second reading.
Okay, then, to move forward to the next reading or the public?
This would be the second reading, and this would be the public hearing reading.
Right, okay. So consensus, Ms. Morgan?
Yes.
Ms. Vaughn?
Yes.
Mrs. Gittens? Thank you. Ms. Jordan?
Yes.
Patrica?
Yes, please.
Ms. Givinelli?
Yes.
And yes for me.
Thank you.
It's unanimous. Thank you.
The next is the mental health and well-being policy, policy 4.222.
Board members, any questions or comments? Ms. Patrica.
I don't have questions. I have a couple of Scribner's thing that I'll send to you.
Ms. Jordan.
I want to know what reasonable attempt means on 84. What does that mean? What's considered reasonable?
So that's actually defined by the statute. So tell me what line you're looking at, please, Ms. Jordan.
84. Contact student's parents, guardian.
If you look underneath that, line 90 through 104. So using telephone calls, text messages, emails, voicemail, ensuring that we're documenting
And then my question is, if it's not being done, then what? Who's held accountable if this is not being done? The 90 down.
So, Ms. Brooks, I'm going to, since that will be under your purview in terms of the accountability, to ensure that this policy is being followed by staff.
Thank you. We are required to report to the Department of Education each of these attempts. What? what methodology was used and the result of each attempt. And that reporting mechanism will be deployed by the Department of Education. They have not yet deployed it. And when they do, we will be responsible for entering that for every action taken for each of the students that we vet for suicidal ideation. So it will be a reporting mechanism to the Department of Education that we are taking the required actions and at the thresholds defined in this board policy pursuant to Senate Bill 590.
So if this happens, you report it to the state with a child's name, so there's a record of these children who are deemed or who, they're deemed, because I'm not sure where the crisis response team comes in?
Sure, yes. The Department of Education has indicated that their required reporting will be done student by student so that each case, they have access to each case.
No, I guess my question too is, when does the crisis team, who makes these decisions? And is it across the board when these people are called in to, the team is called in or the team is not called in?
According to, well, in our district protocol has followed best practice, but 590 actually codified it, which we, we were happy to see that they provided more structure. And our process was updated just with the legal language involved, but really our process was following the guidelines we've been following. So the Department of Education requires school mental health professionals, those would be in statute, our school counselors, social workers, psychologists, or our LMHPs, to use a screener when a student is presenting to them with suicidal ideation. So the screener that we use is the Columbia Suicide Severity Risk Assessment. Based on that screener, our next steps are determined by the level of ideation determined in that screener. So our next step would be if the student scores, and it's, it's right on the screener, if they score low level, which is a one or a two, we call the parent guardian, ask them to come to the school, and we meet with them to talk through the concerns. And then also the safety mechanisms that they can put in place and also access, like the mobile crisis number. In other words, what to do if, if the child escalates at home. If the student scores three through six, that is a call to the mobile crisis response team. And in Senate Bill 590, it now requires school districts to make a call to the mobile crisis response team, and that's required. And if they can report, and by the way, we're calling the parent guardian at the same time. We're not having the team come to campus without notifying the parent. So in our protocol, this required notification has always been part of ours. 590 says that we're calling parents before a student is transported for an involuntary hospitalization. We call earlier than that. So if we're calling mobile crisis, we're calling the parent at the same time or the guardian. If we can't reach either of them, we have to also move to the emergency contact. That is new in this statute. So that is something that we added to our protocols, and that would be defined by the emergency card. So we had to take time to train schools on that. So that piece went into effect later in the fall when we retrained on calling the emergency contact if you can't get in touch with the parent or guardian. If the mobile crisis team is unable to report, or they're, and they have to report within an hour, if they're unable to get there within an hour or the end of the school day is imminent, then the next person granted authority in the Baker Act statute is law enforcement officers. And because we have SROs in our schools, they then become the next step.
Okay, I, I hear what you're saying, but I know for a fact that this is not always happening here. And I, and so I do have an issue with, with this whole, with this whole thing. I mean, I have a personal, I personally know that that is not the case.
Ms. Jordan, is it a question with regards to the policy as it's written? Or is it a question with regards to the implication or the actions taken, the processes that's happening at the school site?
I don't want to have words putting down, put down here that does not apply or that we're not holding ourselves to.
So this is the policy. This is what's supposed to happen. This is what's going to make us legally compliant. There is also a process document that goes along with that that puts this policy into effect. And if this is not happening at the school-based level, at the school site, then this is when Ms. Brooks and her team comes in and, and corrects those, those actions that have not been done appropriately. But this is what's supposed to happen. This is the policy.
Okay, so, and we have an hour? You said there's an hour for the, the crisis team? But that depends on what time of day it is?
Correct. We still call them because they may be right around the corner from a school. And so we are required to call them. Even if the end of the day is imminent, we make the call in case they're able to report before the buses load and students go home, because we're unable to legally hold a child. And yet we're not going to save, we're not going to send them home. In other words, we can't hold them off the bus, but we also don't want to send them home if we have a concern for suicidal ideation. So when we call the mobile crisis team, we call them even if the end of the day is imminent because we want them to do their level best to get to the school, as we're also ensuring the parent or guardian are coming to the school so that we can then work through that with the student and the parent guardian and the mobile crisis team. If they're unable to report, our next layer of, of vetting a student for a potential involuntary hospitalization under the Baker Act then becomes law enforcement, in this case, our SRO, because they're in our schools.
And, and just if I may, just a follow-up on that. So when, when we're considering an involuntary examination, the crisis is not necessarily always a suicidal ideation. Am I correct about that?
Correct. There are times that we have students that express intent to harm another individual, whether it's in the home or it may be in their peer group. And in that case, we are using this protocol, but we're also then secondarily running through our threat assessment teams and that protocol as well to ensure that we're addressing a potential threat of harm to others with those full tools available and deployed.
But then you're saying that legally, if it's time for dismissal, you can't hold the child?
What I'm, what I'm saying is, we are not going to put a child on a bus to go home without taking action to assess and ensure the next level of response after we do the Columbia and we call mobile crisis. If they're able to get there, then that is, that we're able to go ahead and vet that further in greater detail. If the mobile crisis team is unable to get to the school, that is when the principal can involve and legally meet the threshold of the next person, meaning the SRO, to assess the student for a potential involuntary hospitalization under the Baker Act.
And, and then my last part of the question would be that the mobile crisis unit, their job really is to de-escalate the situation?
Yes, our school mental health professionals at our school sites while they're doing the Columbia, they're required to engage in verbal de-escalation. Furthermore, under 590, our mobile crisis response teams are required to engage in verbal de-escalation, and also our school resource officers. That verbal de-escalation language is applied to all three groups in this particular bill to ensure, and we have to document in our reporting mechanism, that each party engaged in verbal de-escalation.
And so if that's successful, then it's likely that the child would not be transported or Baker acted?
Typically, that's a hard one to answer, as you know too, from your years as a school counselor. Typically, yes. Verbal de-escalation obviously means that we would then be connecting that child and parent guardian to services, and they would likely not need an involuntary hospitalization. There are times where we have students that appear de-escalated, and the clinical assessment will still yield significant concern. And so those are by no means going to be the most common outcome, but it can happen.
Thank you. Ms. Javonelli?
I just have a couple of questions. So at what point, well, can you confirm to me that all administrators have been trained and understand this policy and so that they're implementing it correctly?
We offered training and we did several sessions for all principals, assistant principals, all mental health professionals in the schools, and then also for our school resource officers as well on these protocols, yes.
Okay. And then my other question is regarding the parental rights bill. Does that, any of that, is this policy compliant with that? So, and that might be a question for you, actually. Sorry.
It is compliant.
Okay, I want to make sure. Thank you. That's it, thank you.
I have another question, a follow-up. Only because I heard the word offered. She asked a question about our all.
Yes.
And then I heard it has been, it's offered. So does that mean it's mandatory that they all take it and they all have the knowledge? Or it's offered and they may take it?
It was required training, and we did have as many that could attend live as possible. And then we sent out the recording for anyone that may have needed it or wanted to review it. I would have to pull the in-service records to track every principal and assistant principal, and also our mental health team members. We did have very high attendance, and we offered multiple sessions of it to ensure that all attendees could attend. And it was also pushed out by our chief and school development as a training that needed to be attended.
Mrs. Javonelli?
That actually led, leads me to another question then. How do we, I mean, it sounds like you really don't know. And, and so how do we make sure that everyone, I don't think it's an option to, you know, may, I think it needs to be, because I mean, it's, obviously this is very critical. So I, how do we know for sure? And whose job would that be? That, that, that we know that happened, that, you know, that they're receiving the training and everyone's, and everyone, and all means all, is doing it, that, that is in that position that would be, make these determinations?
So I can pull the in-service records, and if it's school mental health team members, I will, I can track that, and we will offer another live session and ensure that they attend. And then if it's admin, I can pull the in-service records and give that to the school development executive directors to follow up with any absentees to ensure that they are able to attend a follow-up training.
Okay, but you're saying you can. It doesn't sound like you have.
I, I have not, I, I will do that.
Oh, yeah, I think it's, that's, that's vital.
And it, I would like to know what my other board members think about that, because I
think that's, it's critical.
Okay.
Mrs. Morgan?
Yeah, so it seems to me in protocol, there needs to be something with respect to when somebody is evaluated, that a determination is made that every obligation they have for training has been met. So it's the supervisor's responsibility to ensure that the training, that, you know, the, the principal or the assistant principal, whomever is in compliance with board policy, because I do believe that we need to make certain that everybody is getting it. I agree.
Thank you.
Absolutely. Any other questions or comments? Ms. Vaughn?
Yeah, I'm 100% on board that this, and, and there's certain other trainings that, that have come up. We had an incident a couple of years ago with, having to do with shooters and handling various things. And it became apparent that there were people, key people in the school who had not been trained. And so, yeah, I think Ms. Morgan's idea for evaluation is, is, is a good one. And I, I think people in key trainings such as this, they need to actually sign off and, you know, the way that teachers do when they're giving, um, um, what are the exams now? FCATs and?
The EOCs.
EOCs. And all of that have to sign off on it to guarantee that they're, they've taken the training and they understand. So, yeah, I'm, I'm 100% behind that. And, you know, we're constantly having new people move into AP roles, for instance. And so that's another thing we have to really watch out for, for all the people that have transitioned into different job positions that now require that, that we have a list. You know, like if you're moving into, let's say, an AP position, you may not have taken several of the key trainings. And so that might be on the to-do list or something like that when people move into these new positions.
Yes, I'd be happy to follow up with Ms. Harrell and Dr. Helen Davis Martin, just to find out from a reconciliation standpoint. We do have, I know for a fact that professional development has a list of all the required trainings, which ones are done on an annual basis, which ones are done in refreshers, in terms of just how they account for that. What's that follow-up process look like with school development to ensure that people who haven't done it on an annual basis, what's that follow-up look like? Be happy to have Dr. Lynn, Lynn get with them and put a written response in the Board Weekly if that, if that would help. Not just for this, but for any of those other things that we know are specifically required, not just in policy, but in statute or any other required trainings. Would that be effective, just to answer your questions relative to how we ensure that piece?
I personally would love to see it because that affects a child's life.
Absolutely.
So they need to, to have everything in order.
Absolutely.
Yeah, and I think, I think we had a similar discussion, you know, before you were superintendent a couple of years ago, during the aftermath of that particular incident where all, I think all of us on the board questioned, how is it on something this important that there are members of staff that have not been, been trained on certain things? So we just need to be really careful that, you know, for, for liability, but also just for safety and well-being, that all these necessary trainings are, are done by the appropriate people.
If you don't mind me adding one piece of information, because I do think it's important along the lines of this concern as well. In regards to the school mental health professionals in the building, we, we do consistent training on various topics. However, the suicidal ideation process and protocols for years have been several times per year at our mandatory trainings for all of our mental health professionals, because that has been very important, that they know this process intimately as far as their required actions from start to finish as well. So as far as the mental health team members, they're trained repeatedly on this because a lot of that protocol starts with them, and then they, they have to then, of course, as soon as the Columbia has been administrated, administered, they're looping in an administrator for this is what the Columbia shows and my next actions that I need to take.
Can I ask one more question?
Of course.
The Columbia? Because I, I've never seen that. And is it questions that are asked? And is it, can they be persuasive questions? I mean, so I don't, so if I'm asking a question, could I ask Ms. Vaughn a question to get the result that I might want? Or ask it in a, in a manner of which you could get two different answers?
It's a six-question, very simple, one line apiece. It's a yes/no answer, which I know in counseling, we encourage open-ended answer, questioning and answers. However, it is a six-question questionnaire. It's evidence-based. And the reason we choose the Columbia as the initial is because the other assessment called the SAFE-T is done by the clinical team with the mobile crisis response team, and that is open-ended and much deeper. It takes up to two hours sometimes to engage in verbal de-escalation and truly deliver the questions in the SAFE-T assessment. And that's why we want the clinical team to do that. And that's also And that's also why we really prefer the parent guardian is there for that deeper Safe-T assessment. But our first, like the dipstick assessment, is that six-question. It's yes or no answers. And while we try to work it in and not say to a student, "Well, let me just, you know, give you this quiz." We try to make it, we're de-escalating, we're talking, but we ask exactly those six questions and they are a yes/no answer. So I, I cannot see, from using it myself with individuals, how it can direct an answer, you know, or lead a student one way or the other.
Thank you for that.
I'll just ask, I'll just ask, see if I can speak later.
Okay.
To get more questions.
Thank you.
And, and I can provide the assessment if the board would like to see it. It's, it's a public assessment available and I can get that to you through Dr. Savage if you would like to look at it.
Yes. All right. Any other questions or comments? Ms. Bruno?
Thank you. I just wanted to make sure that I elaborate just a little bit on the Parents' Bill of Rights that Ms. Giovinelli asked for. So just to remember, this policy is very specific to if, if a student is expressing a suicidal ideation, self-to-harm, or harm others. That's what this is very, very limited to. So pursuant to Florida Statute 1014.04, which is part of the Parents' Bill of Rights, subsection 2, actually subsection 2C, it explicitly states that the section that gives all of the additional rights in terms of controlling your child's education, all that good stuff, does not prohibit a court, law enforcement officer, or an employee of the government that is responsible for the child's welfare from acting in his or her official capacity within the reasonable and prudent scope of his or her authority. So this goes along specifically with that very limited circumstance of exposure to self-harm or harm to others. Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? All right. Thank you.
Chair, I would ask that we have consensus to bring this to first reading, please.
Ms. Gittens?
Yes.
Thank you. It's unanimous.
Thank you. And I want to thank very, very much Lori Brooks and Sheri Wendzel for their participation in helping me draft this policy. This was a team effort. So I really, really appreciate both of you for getting this together. So, thank you.
Thank you.
The next policy we have is the allergy management policy.
Okay.
And this policy was already pre-briefed to the board. And we had a very large team working on this one. Candace Messenger, Chuck Bradley, Wally Cologne, and there were many, many other individuals that also helped contribute to this process and to this policy. At this time, we're asking the board to allow us to bring this to the second reading, which will be the public hearing. And we are here to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you. Board members, any questions or comments for our employee, our staff members?
If there are no questions, Madam Chair, I would ask that this policy be that we take a consensus and the board allow us to move this to public hearing.
Okay. Ms. Gittens?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. It's unanimous.
Thank you, staff.
Thank you.
And that concludes the policy portion of the agenda, Madam Chair.
Okay. Next, we have the naming of Elementary School J. And we have Ms. Stillwell. Welcome.
Thank you. Good afternoon, board members, Ms. Dupree Bruno and Dr. Savage. Thank you for having us here to update what we think is a pretty exciting project, which is the naming of Elementary J in the East Zone. I'm joined by team members Irma Lancaster, Rob Spicker, and Kathy Eba, who will have a hand in this process. They are in the audience. And so I wanted to start out with a timeline to show you how we've gotten to this point. In the fall, operations notified us that it was time to start the naming process for Elementary J so that it would have a name when we break ground in late March. In December, we created an open-ended survey to solicit name ideas for the new school and that survey consisted of two questions. The first was, "What name do you suggest for our new elementary school?" And the second question was, "Why do you think this name should be chosen?" So we sent the survey out to parents in the East Zone, district employees, community groups, the media, and we put it on all of our social media platforms. The survey was open for a week during which we received 300-plus submissions. And during that time the survey was open, we started putting together our ad hoc committee, which per the process may include representatives from local government, community organizations, adjacent neighborhoods, parents and students from the municipality where the school is located, along with the school principal, if one is named, as well as academic services. And of course, board members were also invited to recommend committee members if they wished. And to that end, our ad hoc committee for Elementary J includes a representative from the Lehigh Acres Municipal Services Improvement District, the Lehigh Community Services, Lehigh Kiwanis, and parents from Mirror Lakes Elementary, Gee Weaver Hips Elementary, and Lehigh Acres Middle School. And in addition, Dr. Johnson and Dr. Burr represented academic services, since we don't have a principal for this school named yet, so they were also on the committee. So the first purpose of the ad hoc committee is to compare the name submissions that we get into board policy to make sure that it meets board policy before moving the name forward. And our thanks go to Ryan Hudak for being there during our ad hoc committee so that he could look over those names and help compare them to board policy to make sure that we were following the right criteria and we were in compliance for that. And then the second purpose of the committee is to narrow down the list of submitted names to half a dozen or less in order to take back out to the community for a vote. And so the committee also, as a third purpose, can suggest names of its own that haven't been submitted. And in this case, they did. They submitted two names, two nominations, and we're going to talk about those in a little bit. So as mentioned, we had 300-plus submissions and they were all similar enough to fall into 13 main categories. So if we have like a Sunrise Boulevard Elementary and a Sunrise Elementary, then we kind of put all of that into one category and we talk about it as a category. The ad hoc committee considered the categories which received five or more votes. And then, as I mentioned, also had the ability to put forward names of its own. So we're going to go ahead and get started and we'll run through the different categories. The submission that had the most nominations is Sunrise Elementary, which is the name of the boulevard that leads into the school. The name meets board policy and the committee went ahead and recommended that they move the name forward as Sunrise Elementary School. There was some discussion that it is close in name to Sunshine, which is an existing elementary school, but the committee felt that there were enough nominations that it should be considered. The next two submissions, Helen Stebbins and Veronica Shoemaker, also both meet board policy. And while the committee felt that these two women made great contributions in education and here in Lee County, they did not move the nominations forward as they felt there were a lack of name recognition and ties to Lehigh Acres. The next name with 12 nominations is Sunshine Elementary School. That name, of course, is already taken, so due to Section 5 of Board Policy regarding names being distinctive, that one could not move forward. And the same reasoning applies to Lehigh Elementary, which you see right there at the top of your screen, which came in with 11 nominations. So moving on to the next name was, that met board policy and that the committee is recommending to move forward is Roberto Clemente Elementary School. Clemente was a baseball outfielder from Puerto Rico, the first player from Latin America to be inducted into the National Baseball Hall of Fame. He joined the major leagues in 1955 and spent 18 years with the Pittsburgh Pirates. 13 of those years were spent spring training here in Terry Park. So the committee thought that his name recognition, along with his ties to Southwest Florida and his Hispanic heritage, were reasons to move Roberto Clemente Elementary School forward as a recommendation. Moving on, the name East Lee did not meet board policy per Section 5E as it is not in proximity to, adjacent to, or part of a permanent feeder pattern for East Lee County High School. So we took that name off the list. The next highest-ranking name was Donald Trump Elementary, which the committee determined does not comply with board policy as Section 5G states that a school should not be named for any individual until a suitable time after his or her death, as well as Section 5I, which states that names that are likely to create controversy should be avoided. That brings us to Lee Ratner Elementary School, which the committee did decide to move forward as a recommendation with six nominations. According to history on the Lee County Government's website, Lee Ratner acquired 18,000 acres of land in 1955 that later would become Lehigh Acres. Due to his direct ties to the area and as one of his first residents, the committee decided to move Lee Ratner Elementary forward as a nomination. Lucky Lee Elementary was also put forward as a nomination, and that was the name of Lee Ratner's ranch when he settled here. It was Lucky Lee Ranch out in Lehigh Acres. The nomination meets board policy, but since the committee already recommended Lee Ratner Elementary, it decided not to move Lucky Lee Elementary forward as, as a nomination. So next on our list was Edison, which meets board policy. While there was some concern, again, with the similarity to Edison Park Elementary, the committee did recommend moving Thomas Edison Elementary forward. The discussion happened with that mostly because Edison Park is named after the neighborhood where the Edison home is, and this would be named after the person, Thomas Edison Elementary. So that's why they decided to move that forward. And the final two submissions that came in were Colin Powell Elementary and Palm Elementary. And while the committee recognized the contributions of Colin Powell, there was concern that there was not a suitable interval since his death, which the policy calls for. And then while Palm Elementary would meet board policy, the committee thought that that was a little too vague. So they decided not to move forward with those two. So in addition to reviewing the names submitted, the ad hoc committee also has the opportunity to put forward names of its own for consideration. And in this case, it has two nominations to, for your consideration. The first is Amanasair Elementary. Amanasair is the Spanish, is Spanish for sunrise or dawn. The committee thought that not only was it a beautiful name, but a wonderful way to recognize the Hispanic influence in our minority-majority district, and also gave kind of an homage to the nomination of Sunrise Elementary. The second name in the, the second name that the committee put forward was Gerald Gould Elementary. And Mr. Gould was one of the first founders of Lehigh Acres along with Mr. Ratner. He was the first president of the Lehigh Corporation, which was a development business that owned 20,500 acres of land in the area in 1956. So altogether today, the committee brings you six name ideas for Elementary J. You can see them all there on your screen. And what we are looking for is consensus to move these names forward into the second phase of the process, which I'm going to go through real quick and then we'll come back to this slide. So the second phase includes sending out another survey, which would ask the community to rank these six names from number one to number six, with number one being the name they liked the most. And each name would have a short descriptor next to it, like I just gave you today during this presentation, so people would know what they were voting on. After the survey closes, we would reconvene the ad hoc committee to review the results and then they would provide a recommendation to the board. We would bring that recommendation back to you for discussion during workshop or briefing in February. And depending on the outcome and what you decide of that meeting, we would hopefully put a agenda item on the March 8th action meeting for a vote in order to have the name by the time we break ground in late March. So with that, I will go back to the name recognitions in case you have any questions or discussion.
Yes. Ms. Vaughn?
Well, perhaps people in Lehigh Acres know Lee Ratner or Gerald Gould, but that's not name recognition for me or, I mean, widely known. The, the other thing is, since I don't know of the, you know, these two gentlemen, sometimes these people that buy huge plots of land and, you know, again, I don't know the history. I'm just saying it bears checking out that some of them may not be the most savory characters. And again, they might be saints. I don't know. But before, I would consider those, which I, I don't think have the name recognition, I would also want it to be checked. Do we have any students of history here that, to make sure these aren't like tyrants that bought the land for 15 cents and made a lot of money on the backs of people moving here? So those, those are my comments.
Thank you, Ms. Vaughn.
Hello?
Ms. Gittens? Yes?
Yeah. Can you hear me okay? Is it an echo?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay. Because it's a bad echo mine. But anyway, first of all, I think that whenever we present the names, that they should be presented in alphabetical order whenever they're presented, because that way it doesn't lend itself to, you know, tending that one is better than the other. The other thing is, a few of the people that were on the committee from Lehigh, I spoke with, and they were very concerned about Sunrise because we do have Sunshine not too far away. And they voiced that at the meeting, they did say that they didn't feel that that was as viable a name. I, anyway, the other part of it is, our community, as you know, suffers from digital divide. So everything that is a survey, monks, or something that's on digital, they may not see it. So my suggestion is for the East Zone, that there be maybe even something at a school when the parents are dropping off and picking up their children, that they could do a paper ballot. We have to be able to contact the people in that community that will be affected by the school. I, I know that some of the, the committee feels that Sunrise is being pushed for whatever reason, and that we should be a little more, you know, open to other things. I have heard about the Amanasair that several people did really like, and also the Roberto But I just think that when we put this out there, unlike other zones, we have to find a way to reach more people than we would necessarily in other areas because of technology not necessarily being the first, their first thing. And anyway, I'll leave it at that for now.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Gittens. Any other comments or questions? Okay. Ms. Jordan?
I think, I, I think I heard about Thomas, the Edison one, being confused with Edison. I do believe that that would definitely happen. That's my only comment regarding that one.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Mr.? Yes, Mr. Gittens?
So basically, looking at the list, the Sunrise could be considered as Sunshine as the meeting ended with that. The Edison could be confused with the Thomas, the other Edison school. And Gould, I kind of agree with, with Ms. Vaughn, but I, I still say just putting it in alphabetical order, but also we're putting it out there has to give a simple little awareness about who these people are and their contribution was.
Yes. Thank you. And Mrs. Giovinelli?
So I support that it should be in alphabetical order because I, I, I think that it should read that way, just to be inclusive instead of exclusive. I think it's kind of becomes a little like that's the number one, and it might have been, but if we're starting all over again, I think it should be in alphabetical order. I tend to agree with what everybody said and I, probably my favorite is the, and I'm not sure I'm going to say it right, but the Amanasair. Say that again? Somebody?
Amanasair.
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 I actually really like that. And I love the fact that it's another word for sunrise, which, so it kind of, it would kind of, you know, you kind of get both, the best of both words by doing that. You still get your sunrise, but in another language. And I, I really like that, so. You still get your sunrise, but in another language, and I really like that. That's just my opinion. Thank you.
Yeah, I agree with that.
Thank you, Mrs. Gittens. Okay, so no other comments? Ms. Stillwell, you want to proceed?
That was all I had, was just to make sure that everybody was okay with these six names and moving them forward to the next phase of the process.
Okay.
And we certainly, Ms. Vaughn can, will do a little bit more homework, and I think no matter what, if one of those names was chosen, we certainly would need to reach out to the families to make sure that they were actually okay with us naming a school after a family member, or any relatives or descendants. We had talked about that, too.
As I said, I have no name recognition on that, but it may be because I'm not a Florida native, and, I mean, do most of us on the board, the other people, know who these people are? Because I'm not sure how it passed muster on name recognition.
Well, these were the folks, so these were the nominations that came in.
Right.
And then the committee, the committee being mostly from Lehi knew who these people were, and then the committee members, Lee Ratner at least, and then it was the committee members that moved forward Gerald Gould, because they knew that he was one of the founders as well.
Okay.
May I ask another question?
Yes, absolutely.
As I'm looking at twelve members, and my question is just, the process of course of, for last year, I'm not sure if that January, February ran that now for the survey. And February, are we going back to just the committee? Or is, I'm not sure on dates where we are.
Ms. Stillwell?
Ms. Gittens, I'm not sure that I actually heard you correctly. There was a little bit of breakup there, but I'm going to try to answer with what I heard, is that these six names would go out to the community, and then the committee would look at them again and make a recommendation for a name, a top recommendation and a secondary recommendation, which they would bring back here to the board, to you all, which then, you know, board policy has it that you decide on the school name. So you would be able to accept the recommendation, you would be able to change the recommendation, you'd be able to throw out the recommendation and do something completely different. It would be up to the board at that point.
Well, and I know it's the process that you have, but somewhere between the survey and the ad hoc committee, is there nothing that's going to be like a community discussion or anything about not the name, but the school itself, to talk with the community and share that? And if not, then I'm asking for more specific dates, because as we as board members are out in the community, talking about different things, we can mention specific dates and times that those have to be in.
So at this point, the next ad hoc committee meeting is scheduled for February 14th. So that would be the day that they would go over everything. So the survey would be put out between now and then, and then they would look at those results on February 14th. And then there would be time between there, I believe, and the time we would come back to the board. I'd have to look at the dates where, you know, widespread information could be solicited. We could share that information with the board after the ad hoc committee meets prior to the briefing.
Well, and I know how difficult it is, I think, getting community input, the broad input before you get the ad hoc making of the decision is kind of.
The survey.
It's kind of backwards, and once the ad hoc, then the rest of the community does as well.
That would be the survey. So before the ad hoc committee even meets, we put out a second survey so that the community then can give its input on what it likes the best.
Well, I know, but is there any possibility of doing something wider, a community meeting to talk about it, to talk about that and the school itself?
We could work with operations on that. I know they had an Elementary J meeting in early December to discuss the plans for the school in the community, and that's where we kicked off the initial survey. So I can certainly ask if they're planning on holding another community meeting regarding the school itself between now and then, for sure.
Okay, and if you can just give us specific dates for the survey, because you're talking about the 14th, and the time is seven, so it's going to be out there like 10 days?
I'm sorry, I didn't catch that.
They're 10 days.
I said, so it's only going to be out for 10 days. If they have to have it in a meeting on the 14th, that's what, you know, we need to be telling people that the timeframe of the survey is available, and we're looking for other ways to contact them.
Sure. Well, today's the 25th, so we can have the survey deployed if the board gives consensus no later than the end of the week.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Gittens. Any other comments, board members? All right, so shall we, our consensus to move the six names forward?
And we'll make sure they're in alphabetical order, because I like that idea, too.
In alphabetical order.
Yes.
And Mrs. Gittens?
Yes.
Okay, so it's unanimous.
All right, thank you so much, everybody.
Thank you, thank you, thank you for all your work. Appreciate it. Next, we have our capital project update with Mr. Scott Rickenbacker.
Good afternoon, board. Here we go. Good afternoon, board members. Dr. Savage, Mr. DePuy Bruno. This is Scott Rickenbacker, Director of Construction. This is a new quarterly update, so you'll get these once every three months for all of the projects. We will also be providing every month, though, by auditing. We have to provide you with the contingency and the change order reporting, so you'll have that in your briefings, but it'll be separate without a presentation.
Thank you.
First up is Cape Coral Elementary School HVAC project. This does not have what, just for all the slides, so you have it, we're doing a little different format here, where you see N A, not applicable. That would be a non-phase one, phase two project. It would be a continuing contract, direct build. Key highlights on this project, renovations, test and balance commissioning have been completed, and we're in the closeout process at this moment. Once that's complete, then we'll go to internal audit for a final payment for the project, ultimately to the board. That was substantially complete on September 15th. Again, Fort Myers High School HVAC renovation. Again, that was a continuing contract, substantially complete on 9/15, and we're receiving the closeout documents right now. And again, we have a checklist for everything to go for internal permit auditing, and then we'll bring it to the board for final payment. Orangewood Elementary School HVAC renovation. It should be coming to you tonight, I think the 25th. That is a complete HVAC fan DX unit and controls replacement of that entire school. The existing system has reached its useful life, rotted out, so we're getting that replaced. Phase one money will provide for all of the design, preparing for a GMP, and ultimately to come back to you with a total project cost for that project. Riverdale High School, we provided you just a picture of the schedule that has been designed between design staff, construction, school-based staff, and the principal deeply involved. We're going to be doing something a little different on this one. There's going to have to be three phase two approval of a GMP. The first phase this summer, we want to get site work done. There's a lot of off-site permitting that won't be completed in time, as well as the design of the program, but we want to utilize this summer to go out there and do all of the major site shifting of parking lots, sports fields, and some drainage structures. So we're going to come back to you. We'll do the design. I'll come back to you at station points. One will be for a site package. The second package will be for the structural foundations of the new gym and the addition wing out there, as well as the off-site work, once we get county approvals. And then the third package would be the interior renovation, where we update and renovate the interior of the existing campus proper. So that's just a little heads up on that coming forward. And you can read the notes right now. We should hopefully have the design done by February 3rd for that first package, and I'll set to the board to come to you for a phase two A approval of those funds and GMP. In place, we're getting a permit with South Florida Water Management in Lynn County, will be submitted in February, once that design is complete. Lee County Utilities will be submitted on 4/12/22. Offsite will be completed on the first, this is the design, and first of April 22, and submitted to Lee County on the 4th of April, within a couple of days. And again, the gymnasium building design will be completed on 8/12/22, and the existing school remodel design will be completed on 10/7/22. So if you recall, we came to you with about five different concepts of the site and how we engage with the school. That just got completed in December, so now we're moving forward with all those design packages.
Thank you.
Next is VPAA, and also the old lamps. We're already underway. If you haven't been out there, we've already started demolishing things out in the front of the school, and the canopies, and clearing it, and sprucing it up, getting rid of all of the old infrastructure and things on the interior of the school, so we're going great guns with that. You, GMP, went to the board on the 11th of this year, so you guys already approved $12.6 million, and the demolition did, in fact, begin on the 17th. And that will be substantially complete by the 10th of August, which is the first day of school. The actual contract says 8/9, the day before, so. G Weaver Hips Pre-K Edition, the first phase of this design phase has been approved by the board. That'll be on the 2nd of, or 8th of February. I'll be coming to you with a phase one approval for the design. You also are going to be approving, you already approved, and we purchased a section of land for the pre-K building alongside it, there was another existing strip of land. That was an existing easement between what was the old Kmart building and the property we purchased, so we're in the process of purchasing that, and I believe that's coming forward to you soon, or that purchased property is occurring soon. Once that's done, then we can start our whole process. So you'll be getting a phase one design approval request coming to you on February 8th. Fort Myers Technical College, right now, we've got all our bids in. We're waiting for our final GMP submission from the general contractor for that job. That substantial completion will be August of '23. Lee County Public Education Roof Completion. As you can see, we're marching around the building. I know you love the smell of asphalt in the morning, but we're making great headway in a few more months here. We should have things wrapped up, so. J and MM Elementary, MM Design Drawings, which is the addition to the brand-new middle school we opened last year. Those drawings are 100% complete and going out on the street for bid. The J Shell Drawings are 100% complete. That's the structural component of J, and the interior build-outs are about 60%. Substantial completion for both of those projects will be June 1st of 2023. Transportation East in Buckingham, we're underway. We've already started the demolition. We started tearing it up, and where still dirt is being laid. Framing and foundation work has begun on the 17th, and plumbing work will begin on the 19th of January, as shown. And everything's already underway on that project, and that'll be done June of '23. Villas Elementary, this is a maintenance project we took. We're finalizing proposals. This is underground plumbing work we're taking for maintenance and have one of my product managers oversee. Same thing with Fort Myers High School, gym repiping, we're getting proposals and documentation. Success Academy, again, a re-pipe job from maintenance underway, getting final proposals put together, and then we'll submit a work authorization for superintendent's execution. Same thing in Cypress Lake High School, another re-pipe from maintenance, and again, getting all the proposals put together so we can get a work authorization moving forward. Lehi Acres Middle School, the old portable renovations are just about complete, and we're getting ready to move the children into those portables, and then we can start our massive demolition on the inside. So you can see the transformation. I don't know if any of you have been in those portables prior to us doing that, refreshing, but there's some brand-new pictures of what's going on. It's like night and day, so. Structural surveys. After the Benita Springs issue with a historic building, we commenced with a work authorization to have an architectural firm go to all of our historic buildings and do a structural survey of each one of those buildings. So as you can see, this is his schedule. Dunbar's complete on February 7th. He'll start that, I misspoke, I'm sorry. Fort Myers Beach is completed. Edison, he's completed. Tice Elementary is completed. I'm waiting on those reports. Dunbar Community will begin on the 7th of February, as Alva School again on February 1st. And J. Cole in English, he was scheduled to go out there on the 25th. So as soon as all those reports are compiled, I'll bring them to you for a report and digest and analysis of where we are. Some freezer-cooler jobs. We've already started engaging and ordering all these freezer coolers. This is where we do work for the food service and do use their state funding to replace freezer and coolers throughout our schools. These will all be done for start of school this year. Orangewood Elementary Freezer Cooler. Skyline Elementary Freezer Cooler. Trafalgar Middle Freezer Cooler. Barnes Marsh Free Middle Freezer Cooler. Fort Myers Middle Kitchen Repipe Renovation. Fort Myers Wraparound. This was a request where we didn't necessarily have funding, but we were asked to go out there and bring one of our design professionals in to just walk through and look at the program they'd like to see implemented at this school. A very brief conceptual study and some cost analysis of what that will be. So right now, we're getting his cost proposal. We'll get the work authorization for him to start that, and I hopefully can bring something back to you in the next 30 days on that particular project. That was Florida Public Service Academy and Gun Range. Again, we have an architect that's working on a schematic drawing and costing, so that should we decide to move the track, the skid track and the gun range to the current FMTC site that has available land, we can give you some concepts and some potential costing with that, and that's underway as well. So hopefully in the next 30 days or so, we can have something for you there. Parks Elementary, we're currently in the design phase. They're starting out with the trailer mobilization design across from James Stevens Academy, so that's underway. We're already going to start looking at how we refresh the portables. We're going to have to add several bathrooms into our portables and get the leasing company to provide bathrooms in their leased portables that we have now as well. And all those portals will be coming out from behind Lehi Senior, so we'll just remobilize them over in that area. I promised you a schedule of the single-point entries. This is all the ones that my department, Construction, is managing. You can see that the design is already in progress. You'll see to be determined in terms of the general contractor. Once we get the designs ready, then we can bring the general, request the general contractors for a continuing contract program to start analyzing that and go out and get proposals and bids on that. So that's just something that you'll see updated to see the progress on the single points. And that's the end of the capital update. I would like to ask the board one question, and I believe Ms. Giovinelli brought this up several years ago. When we get to some of these schools, so when I bring you a total project cost for, say, G Weavers, we've bought some property there, and I'll have a total project cost, and I believe Ms. Giovinelli back in the time had wanted to see the cost of properties included in that total project cost. Is that the desire of the board?
Ms. Giovinelli?
I don't know if it should be included. I think it probably should be separated out as a line item, so we know what part was land and what part was the cost.
Exactly what I would do. It will show on that total project cost sheet. It won't be part of, you know, that's for funding to do, but it'll show you what the cost of GMP is, the insurances, FF and E, and what the cost of that land purchase was for that project. I just wanted to make sure we haven't had, reached that point where I had some property buy that was in such close proximity to my total project cost report. I just want to make sure that was the direction you guys wanted me to go in.
And sometimes, I mean, like when we purchased it, maybe, or something like that, because, I mean... I mean, the year we purchased it sometimes determines what that, you know, we might have got a great deal on it, you know, 20 years ago. And that's actually kind of good to know, but, and for the community to know. I think it's just pretty much just, just being transparent. But something we might have to buy recent is going to explain some of that, too. So I think the date of when it was purchased might be important. I would love to hear what my colleagues say. And that's all.
I would agree with that. Ms. Morgan?
Yeah, I have two comments, Scott. Thank you. Yeah, I would agree. I think one of the things that we want to be able to track is student station cost and per pupil cost as we go forward with these projects, so that we know, you know, we can see where costs are escalating and whatever, or at least have some data points. The other thing I would suggest, if my colleagues agree, I would like to see cooler-freezer, re-pipe, and HVAC all put on one slide with the schools. You know, every school with HVAC, you put it on one slide to show where they are in the process. Then we don't have to go through separate all of these slides. So those are my, those are my comments. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Mrs. Gittens?
Yes, I have a couple. The last comment. I agree with Ms. Morgan and about putting everything on one that is the same, you know, type of project. That would be easier. And I'm going to bring up VPAA again. I've said many times before, the board did not vote on that whole, how that was handled. And which means the community did not participate as well. I know that there were some community meetings at the school, but I think it should have been a little more, you know, vigorously reaching out to the community. And I still have not, well, we, because everybody would receive it, have not received the DOE data that we were told, I think at the last meeting, that once the lambs group moved to the new school, that DOE said that we had to combine, I forget what it was called, the MIB or something like that, that we had to combine it all together. And I asked for that data and those reports, and I still have not received them. So that was one thing. The second thing on Gee Weaver Hips, I had heard at one point that their preschool was going to be like the preschool hub for the East Zone. And my question is, how does that fit with VPAA extending or expanding their preschool as well? Mr. Rickembacher, I don't know if that's your question or superintendent's or someone else.
Per view, ma'am.
Mrs. Gittens, I just have one question. If you can just clarify, because I didn't hear you well. What did you say that the board did not vote on, just so I can note that, please?
So when the process began to move the old lambs out and into the new school, the board did not make that decision. The board did not make the decision to move forward on what was happening with VPAA. There's been no discussion. There's been no, you know, workshops about it or anything, any input. It was just done. And we were told this is what's going to happen, so. And then at the last meeting, I think it was superintendent mentioned that once they moved out, for some reason, the whole school had to be under one, one name, according to DOE. And I have to see the correspondence and the data that stated that between us going, you know, to DOE and what they sent back. And I have not received that.
Ms. Patrica?
I have some more questions. There's no one's going to answer, though.
Please come, please continue, Ms. Gittens.
Okay, well, can, can the superintendent or anyone answer the fact about the pre-K at Gee Weaver Hips and VPAA? Or is that something they can get to me or get to us soon?
Ms. Gittens, this is superintendent. Just wanted to kind of make sure we're all on the same page. So essentially, for us, the probably the easiest thing to do is be very specific about the questions that are being asked, so that we can get the exact detailed question that's being asked, so there's no misinterpretation of what the question even is. Then what we can do is provide written responses to any question that is asked in terms of information that's needed, clarifying misconceptions around what's being asked. I think for staff, you know, we just, every, every time this topic comes up, there is a very earnest attempt to try to resolve any discrepancies of misunderstandings. And so just for the sake of trying to have a real clear record of information for everyone, that we're all operating off kind of the same understandings, the best thing that I can oppose here is we get with you to get exactly what it is that you are saying, so that we have a real clear understanding, that we really have you take a look at that list of questions. These are the questions that I'm asking. This is really what I'm wanting. And then we provide those answers in writing to not just you, but all the board members, including any of the supportive documentation that goes along with it. I know we recently attempted to put together a timeline, a list of all the key thresholds, the key times of what things are in front of the board, which things are presented, which things are voted on, when that occurred, to really kind of close the gap for that whole Veterans Park piece. Because I know it is a pretty frequent topic that comes up, just as we do. So we just want to make sure everything's handled appropriately and also just very transparently and in a very detailed written fashion, so that there's just a real clear understanding. Would that be acceptable to you, Ms. Gittens, and to the rest of the board?
Well, the only thing I'm asking for is what I asked for in the last meeting. And when you mentioned the project being transparent, it was not. But what I asked for the last time was the DOE data that you mentioned before, that once the one school moved to the new one, that all of VPAA had to be joined together. So that is the question I'm asking specifically about that. The second question specifically, Gee Weaver Hips was slated to be like the pre-K, with that addition that they're making, to be the, like the hub for pre-K. But if they're building that along the same time that they are adding pre-K to Veterans Park Academy, how does that work? That's my specific question, and you can get back to me on that. I have two more, very quickly. One is, you mentioned, Mr. Rickembacher says Buckingham Bus Area is not going to be done until June of '23. And I am requesting that in the meantime, that the condition of those, excuse me, of those portables over there need to be pressure washed and remove all of the old rusty burnout buses and materials and furniture that's sitting around it. If they have to deal with those, with the same facility for a whole year or more, at least we could pressure wash. At least we can make it look decent until the new one is fixed. I understand and I appreciate the new one going in, but for a year and a half, they have to, you know, do the same thing, go all the way across the driveway to go to the bathroom and then go back to, to the trailer. So I'm just asking for something to be done between now and the time that they receive the new building.
Dr. Savage, I'll get with maintenance and with transportation, and we'll work something out to get the place cleaned up, a little spiffed up, and make sure it's safe for everybody there.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Rickembacher.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that. And on the portables that are behind lambs, thank you all for fixing those up. How many of, did you fix all of them? And how many will be used at this point, just for the fourth and fifth graders from Veterans Park?
That's a curriculum question. I just refresh them. I don't know what grade levels they intend to put into those portables, whether it's, you know, of the 16 portables, I believe that out there. I couldn't tell you if it's four, fifth grades, six, sixth grades. I just couldn't tell you. That's curriculum or student assignment.
I believe you are correct, it's fourth and fifth grade. Ms. Gittens, we'll get from school development, the school-based principal, just that answer of exactly how many. But I believe it is fourth and fifth grade that are using those portables that you're talking about right off the site. But Scott is not, would not be involved in that side of it, just the conditioning.
No, no, no. I understand that, but I don't, but I know the fourth and fifth grade are in the building now, and they need to get them out, so. And the last thing that I will ask is an update. You don't have to do it right now. On the technical center in the East Zone, it has gone back to forty at one point from five-year plan to ten-year plan, and I'd just like to have an update on it. And that is all of my questions. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Patrica?
Could you have staff refresh my recollection, our recollection as to when we had that, I'm sorry. When we had that workshop, I don't remember if it was a workshop or a briefing, but staff sat down there and went through the trend data that we got from that community meeting we had regarding VPAA. It would be super helpful, because I recall giving staff direction at that meeting as a board, but I'd like to re-watch the meeting and make sure. And I think I remember you clarifying last week about the one-name thing and the one-campus thing. You actually clarified that it's not required by the DOE, but it's something that we're doing. So I think a written response to that, like you said, would be fantastic. And finally, if I may, to Ms. Gittens through the chair, I was, I was waiting on the emails that you've received from the community, please, regarding their concerns about one large campus. Because I don't live out there, I don't necessarily get those emails, but it would be super helpful for me as a board member to be privy to the same level of community feedback that you've received, please, Ms. Gittens. Thank you.
Well, and I, may I respond, ma'am?
Yes, please.
I, you know, I will go back to my account, but I, it's something that each board member would have to do. I don't ask for that with everybody else who's there, and it kind of lends itself to, do you not believe that I got these responses? Because I did. And I'm just making that statement to the board. I would think that you would accept the fact that I said that.
Thank you, Ms. Gittens.
Well, it's not that I don't believe you. I'm sorry. It's just that we got trend data from a community forum, but I'm hearing different feedback from you. So it's, I'm a data person, so it's helpful for me to see all of the information as we go into any decision-making process. That's, it's not a matter of lack of belief. It's conflicting information that I've received. Thank you.
And, and Madam Chair, final comment. That, the data we received from that, there were approximately 10 actual community members. The rest of the people is that staff, because I counted. So that's why I'm not about that.
Mrs. Gittens, you're breaking up.
I am not convinced about that data, because there were approximately 10 community members, and the rest were staff and people from the district and from teachers from the school, who are parents, of course. But I think that if we're going to use data, we need to get a broader perspective of data and not just one small group. And have we done it again and gone out to more community? We can't just rely on that one meeting.
Ms. Gittens, that's why I'm asking for the emails, please. That's exactly the point.
Thank you. Okay. Any further questions or comments? Okay. Mrs. Giovinelli?
What only concerns me is that we have received data, data, like, especially with the Astero area, that wasn't, that had changed. And so I think clarification on the data is probably really important, but sometimes that data can be manipulated. So we know that. So I think we have to be really cautious about what we're doing. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And Mr. Rickembacher, do you have some more?
Just two other items. You had attached two months' worth of change order reporting. Were there any questions on those reports?
Okay. Board members, any questions on the change orders?
We'll streamline the next reports.
Thank you, Mrs. Gittens. Okay.
We'll streamline the reports next time, combining all those jobs, as you request.
Thank you very much. Okay. Next on the agenda is public comment. Attorney Dupree Bruno, will you address public comment? Do we have any?
Well, let's see. Madam Chair, school board policy provides the opportunity at this point in the meeting to address the board concerning any matter on this meeting's agenda. If you completed a public comment card, please put it in the basket provided at the back. Please be advised that the board will not respond during public comment to remarks made by speakers. Speakers who fail to follow proper decorum in the chambers will be ruled out of order. Any speaker continuing with such remarks will be required to relinquish the microphone per Board Policy 1.11 and may be removed from the chambers. There will be one warning. Per Board Policy 1.11, the time per speaker is three minutes. You will find a countdown on the big screen in the front of the room. Once your time has elapsed, the microphone will automatically shut off. Please state your name when you approach the microphone, and I will call you five names at a time.
Do we have any cards?
And let me see how many we actually have, Madam Speaker. We have one person to speak.
Is there anyone else in the auditorium who would like to speak?
At this time, I will call Denise Nystrom and Christine Divagili.
Okay. Thank you.
Hi, good afternoon, Denise Nystrom. Mrs. Jordan and Mrs. Giovinelli, I would just like to thank you for taking so seriously that suicide prevention policy. I thought that you made really, really good points. And when it comes to children's safety, I think you're right. We definitely have to double down and make sure that everybody has received the training. So thank you for taking the time to, to do that. That was greatly appreciated. You talked about representatives that are selected to sit on various committees. I have never been selected to sit on a committee, even though I have applied to sit on committees. I would suggest perhaps there's another system for selecting people, because I don't believe that I will ever be selected to sit on a committee, even though I would have volunteered for many of them. That won't happen, because I live in District 3. With regard to the superintendent search, am I allowed to talk about that right now?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. I would like full disclosure with regard to if any of the current board members have any relationship, connection, anything whatsoever through any of the candidates, whether it's personally, through an organization, friends of friends of friends. Do you know them at all, the three candidates that are likely to move forward? And lastly, I can understand how Mrs. Gittens feels about being asked for her emails. When I watched yesterday, you were all talking about the emails that you received with regard to the superintendent search, and nobody said, let's collect all those emails so that we can look to see if the people that reached out to you were really, you know, were indicative of the people that it is that you liked for school board candidates. Thank you.
Hello, Kristi Divagili.
I'm going to start with the allergy, the allergy policy. And I get it, we're just moving it on so it can go into public comments, so the public can comment on it. But if I, I'm going to be like Ms. Gittens right now, and I'm going to say this, and I'm going to say it, and I'm going to say it at every opportunity I get to say it. This is just putting a Band-Aid on a gunshot wound. Fixing, putting an allergy policy out there doesn't fix the problem with the food. Our current refrigeration solution doesn't fix the problem with the food. You ladies know what fixes the problem with the food, and it does not involve still fighting with and appealing the case with Mr. Oaks. That's number one. The elementary J naming, I think that I have to agree with Ms. Giovinelli and Ms. Gittens. I really liked the Spanish alternative for the sunrise. I thought that was a nice, I don't know, thought that was like a nice compromise between the groups. In regards to the change orders, I heard Mr. Rickembacher say that the change orders would be included in a different, in a different briefing to you guys, not necessarily a briefing, but a different update. I would like to know if the public will be made privy to that update and how we would be able to see those change orders and those approved, whatever that was. What was the last one? One other thing. I have to agree with Denise on a lot of the things that she said about the suicide prevention protocols. But, oh, the superintendent search. I also would like to know if any board member, if any current board members or anyone in administration in this building, in the district building, if anyone in here has any affiliations or ties to any one of the top three. I'd also like to say, I'm going to say this tonight, too, at public comment, I am on that committee. I am at one of the parent reps. I was chosen by one of the board members. I'd like to know where my invitation is to that little get-together that you guys were discussing yesterday, because I have not received any emails. And I have a lot of problem, I have a lot of concerns with the way that that whole process was done with Rain Associates. I think it was very unprofessional, the way they handled that entire thing, the fact that I got a Survey Monkey, that I could have just literally, I could have sent it to everyone and their grandmother. They would have never known. Anybody could have filled that thing out. But then, then again, not everybody even did fill it out, as they said yesterday. So like, that whole process really needs to be reevaluated. I'm going to, with my last five seconds, remind you, guys, that you could have done this yourself. You didn't need them to come in here and do that job.
Thank you, ladies. Okay.
If you may, if I may, Madam Vice Chair, the, just the comment Ms. Divagili mentioned, I just wanted to clarify about those updates. When Mr. Rickembacher was speaking, what he was, the shift that we were making was he used to do the monthly construction updates, we're shifting to quarterly for the more robust updates with all the different projects, very much as what Ms. Morgan had requested. That was just an attempt to try to take it from like a 50-slide deck down to a smaller deck and just have those very specific schools. So it's still transparent, but it allows them time to do that. The part that will still occur on a monthly basis is the change orders. And those are really from an auditing standpoint, ensuring that that information, any change in that piece will still happen, and it'll still be in the, our recurring monthly meetings, so that that public will have access, very much the exact same way that they do today. It just won't be presented because the actual PowerPoint presentations that will be coming will be on a quarterly basis unless the board decides they want it more frequently.
It's fine.
Thank you. Okay. Yes?
I just wanted to also clarify that an appeal was not taken in the Oaks Farms case, in the federal court case. There is no appeal that has been taken.
Thank you. Okay. Next on the agenda is other business and good of the order. And now we'll have a discussion regarding the superintendent search, three finalists. So at this time, I did see on the TV news that the three finalists have been named based on our workshop yesterday. But I think we have an opportunity now for any comments or discussion regarding the three finalists before we bring it to Good Cause at tonight's action meeting.
That's the Ethics in Journalism Award. I'm being sarcastic.
Okay. Ms. Vaughn.
Wasn't, I didn't, I saw there was a news report and I didn't read it. Is, I'll just say, that's rather presumptuous, because that was, anyway, I'll just leave it at, that was rather presumptuous, that they chose who we named when, we haven't done that yet.
And, and so that's what we'll do now. We'll get consensus on the three finalists and move it to Good Cause at tonight's action meeting. So, any, any comments? I'll start with you, Mrs. Morgan. Do you have any?
I have no comments. I'm comfortable with the list, and I'm ready to approve it at tonight's meeting.
Okay. Ms. Vaughn.
I don't have a problem at all with the first two. And, you know, I'm willing to go with whatever my board colleagues feel. Mr., Dr. Perry was one that I was hoping as a whole we would take another look at. Somebody made a comment yesterday, might have been Mrs. Giovinelli, about flying a small plane and, and a larger plane. And then there was another comment about skill sets. And I really am hoping that if anybody on this board has the inclination to consider Mr. Perry instead of one of the others. I think Mr. Bernier is, he was solidly at, at the top, it seemed. So that, that would be my comment. I'd be comfortable with the three that we have, but I really would like to take a second look at Mr. Perry, since he is a sitting superintendent right now, albeit in a school district that's much smaller than our school district. And I like his educational background, and I also liked his demeanor. And I felt that he seemed more comfortable and free-flowing in, in his answers when I heard the number three candidate, Dr. Ramirez. He didn't, he seemed, and actually, my, my thought was the same as a couple of the people that I asked or pointed to be on the committee. Maybe it's just the teacher in us, because both of them were teachers at two different schools. They both had the same feeling that I did, that he didn't feel as comfortable, that he seemed more hesitant. I think he picked up the pace a little bit or became more comfortable with the process as he went along. But my thought was also that, to be a superintendent in this district, one of, one of the responsibilities is going out into the community, being comfortable with the community, being on top of things, answering questions. I mean, look at what we do every time we have a board member and have a superintendent here. For the shortcomings that I saw in Dr. Rud Ramirez, the one thing I liked about him that really disappointed me with the others is that he is bilingual. I don't recall that any of the other candidates are speakers of, of a second language. And of course, it's a moot point now, but I received quite a few comments. As a matter of fact, one person that I said had about women on, on the list. And one, one of the people, I went back and forth a couple of times in answering some questions, and I finally just said, well, call me. And we had a really, really long chat on it. So, yeah, it's a moot point, but I just want to put it out there that, yeah, it's true, the top 10, no women, 31 applicants. And as I looked at those other 21 that weren't in that top 10, quite frankly, I was expecting to pull a female candidate out of that, like, well, what about so-and-so? But I, that was another disappointment to me, that they really didn't seem to have the kind of expertise and, and background that we were looking for. So those are my, my two disappointments. One, that we have just one candidate that is, is fluently bilingual. And secondly, that among our top people, there were no, there were no women. But if anybody is, has the appetite to take another look at Dr. Perry, I think that might behoove us before we make our final decisions. That's what I have to say.
Thank you, Ms. Vaughn. Mrs. Gittens?
Yes, I'm here. I agree with Ms. Vaughn. Mr. Perry was, was one that I felt should have gotten a better look as well. And overall, I am disappointed with the way that the process went. And I'm a bit disappointed that we did not have a more extensive, more diverse group. And with the company being a national company, I just, I, I just thought that perhaps we could have had a broader choice. I personally think that we were in such a hurry to rush through it, that we could have had an opportunity to have different people. But the board chose to move quickly rather than, in my opinion, more expeditiously. I will probably just, you know, agree with everyone, but I would like to go see, discuss more about Dr. Perry. The other thing is, I looked on, because I'm not there, I'm looking on board docs, and I don't even see the, the final worksheet that we did yesterday. And I would like to see that put up there with all of the scores, but without that top board members and one through seven, because it is not accurate. We did not identify ourselves in any way yesterday, which I thought actually was very good, because that's the way it should be, rather than, you know, why do we need to know? The whole objective was to figure out which ones did we, as a, as a whole, select to rise to the top. So if we put that out there, I appreciate it going out, but I would also appreciate that top row, so that people are not confused at all that it has to do with individual board members. Thank you.
So I believe that we did get that email to us by Ms. Roman, as far as the, the chart went. Ms. Roman?
But what, what I was saying is, it's why isn't it on board docs? And I don't hope that was a decision to not put that out there. But anyway, that, that was my thought.
And Mrs. Gittens, Ms. Roman is going to answer that. If you look at yesterday's workshop, you will see that it has been added. Okay, it is on board docs on yesterday's workshop.
Right. But I'm just saying, and I'm not faulting anyone. I'm just saying, if it is an item on board docs today, then perhaps it should have been on there today. And, you know, it's a follow-up. I'm looking to choose the three. So just to have it there for people to see, well, here's our, here's what we did yesterday, which led us to this point. That's all. No, no fault, not blaming anyone. I just think it made it easier.
Thank you for that. Do you have any further comments right now?
No, I didn't.
So then, are you comfortable with moving forward with the three finalists from yesterday's activity? Or do you want to take another look at Dr. Perry?
I don't know. I would like to take another look at Dr. Perry, but I don't know if the rest of the board decides to, so they have an appetite to do that.
Okay, well, I'll continue polling the board, and then we'll see.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Jordan?
Thank you. I, I have to say, I went and watched them again. So in saying that, and I was looking at like certain words that really stuck out to me, like Mr. Ramirez. And I did speak to quite a few of people and their representatives. And no, I do not know anybody, nor have I ever seen these people in my life, just FYI. But when I was speaking to, to them, they were very impressed. What they kept speaking on is how he is a, how he is out in the community, how he is a community builder, how he bridges the community together.
I'm sorry, which candidate?
Michael Ramirez.
Thank you.
So when I was speaking to the superintendents on him, that was the biggest thing that they said about him, is how he can bring people together, whether it's inside or outside, that he is, he came in and he started doing that immediately. And he does a great job in Denver where he's at, and he still continues to do that, to reach out to the community and speak to everybody. So he's very inclusive of everyone. Also, I like the fact that, you know, he states that he leads from the front, he's driven, he loved, his, his four Ls, that he speaks about team. So I appreciate all of that. Then Christopher Bernier, I will eventually understand how to say that. I appreciate the fact that he continued to speak about exceeding expectation and integrity. That was huge with him. So to me, and building the, building the trust, the bank account. You build that trust, and then once you build that trust, then you can ask people to come along with you. So that was a huge thing for him, is building the trust bank, and that's his strength. Servant leaders, you know, when things go wrong, it's on him. When things are right, it's, everybody else gets the accolades. And then Mr. Mueller Wine, I really appreciated his, he's very, very team-oriented, very team-oriented. He speaks about team continuously, relationships with the board. His strength is listening, his sense of urgency, his level of integrity and trust. He spoke a lot about the psychological safety, about children. All of them, to me, struck that they were very much about children. And when I did my own, based on the comments that I had received, and I did the, the tally of, of the pros and cons, I know that, who was it? Actually, Mr. Ramirez had more comments about him, and I think I said this yesterday, than any of the other candidates. And the least amount was Dr. Perry, actually. So I'm, I'm good with the three. But they all had, you know, certain greatness to them. And I think it was Kathleen, or actually, it was Ms. Vaughn who said yesterday, if we can take, I'm sorry, Ms. Morgan, if we could take, but Ms. Vaughn stated it, if we could take a little bit of everybody and put them into one, we can make the perfect person. person. But we don't have that luxury.
Right. Okay. Ms. Patrica?
I'm very comfortable with the, um, top three as they emerge through the force consensus process. Um, I do have, um, some concerns about, um, Mr. Perry, um, based specifically on the feedback that I got. Um, and this is not me, this is the feedback that I got from the public.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and from, um, some people with whom I spoke. The word "I" was used 57 times in his interview. The person with whom I spoke mentioned that they had counted that, and so it seemed like a me thing, as opposed to a team or a district thing, which frankly, is a lot easier to do in a small district than it is to do in a large district. Um, progress is easier to make in a small district, because the numbers are smaller. And I loved your airplane example, but actually, different, different levels of licensure are required as you get to larger planes. So, it wasn't really an, an apt comparison, in the sense that there is, I believe, an experience, um, associated with a larger district that simply isn't there. I was told he wasn't qualified, I was told he was forgettable, but to a person, every single person said he was a nice guy. Really nice guy. Like, I'd love to sit and have a conversation with him. However, the things he's doing that he considers to be innovative are things that Lee County has been doing for a very long time already. And again, that, that's reflective of the small district experience. So, I'm very comfortable with, um, with the top three as they, as they shook out yesterday. And, and if it helps, um, at all, Ms. Vaughn, one of my favorites is not in the top three. I really loved, um, Mr. Gall, I really, really loved him, and would have loved to have given him a second look, but it didn't, he didn't rise to the top. And as we both said yesterday, a little polarizing there, so I, I'm not sure that's the best going forward. So, those are my comments for now. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Giavennelli?
Thank you. So, I liked Mr. Perry, or it was Dr. Perry, but, um, I had a lot of people that actually liked him in my, in my group, and people that contacted me. So, I think it's just, I guess, perception, um, how one perceives somebody, um, my, my opinion, but, um, and my point to the airplane, it could be a boat, you know, you can, if you can drive a boat in an emergency, you can drive a, a bigger boat. So, it was just about, I think, learning, as long as you had the skill set somewhat rooted, you're, you're able, you should be able to navigate that. But, um, I do respect how we got here. Uh, so, I mean, Bernier, I think a lot of us, I mean, that was a pretty much majority. Um, Maller-Wine, I was, I actually personally really liked him, but I was surprised to see that, that the rest of us did. So, I was, that was, I was pleasantly surprised. Um, Ramirez, loved him, I think, but every, all the feedback that I'm getting, even from districts that he came from, told me he's too nice for our district. And that concerns me, um, because I feel like he's very nice, and, and a nice gentleman, and, um, so, I, you know, sometimes being too nice doesn't get you very far. And so, that, um, and that was kind of my thought, is that, man, this is a nice man. So, um, I think, uh, that he would make a great superintendent, I just, I'm not sure that he would be the best fit for us. Um, but I think he's a, I think he's a great candidate in, in our pool, so, um...
You gonna let him come in and show us how mean he can be?
I think he's, I don't think he's capable of that, that, I don't think he's that strong. I don't, he didn't come in that strong to me, um, my opinion, but...
I'm just teasing.
But my, but I, but I wasn't the only one that said it, so, um, and I tried to let, I tried to let other people tell me. Um, I had people that wanted to contact me before we, um, even got resumes, and I said, no, I do not want to hear about any of, anybody that, um, before we actually have our, um, our own interviews, uh, because I don't want to be biased. And I was very clear about that, uh, and so they said, oh, fair enough. So, that's how, um, I came to my conclusions. Uh, so, I mean, I did care for Mr. Perry, I'll be, I'll admit it, I'd be the first, because I feel like he's a superintendent. Um, so, it just gives me pause in the others that are not superintendents, but you know what? Opportunities knocking.
Can I just?
Yes.
So, I wanted to mention, you didn't want to be biased, the people with whom I spoke, I said to them, I don't want, I don't, I want you to talk. I don't want any of my impressions to prejudice yours. So, tell me what you think, and then we'll have a conversation. Okay.
And, and Ms. Sure, there was a question that was asked about the women, and I see that that was sent, I know that Ms. Morgan had sent, it was 25%. Uh, 25% were, had completed the application, were females.
25%? Okay.
So, I thought, I've thought about that, because I, I, you know, I actually love women leaders, but I think that, um, since we're already a women, a, a board of seven women, sometimes we need a little bit of diversity. And so, I'm kind of, I'm kind of thinking that Ray and Associates, Associates kind of knew, knew that a little bit more, and maybe that's why I didn't, because I went and looked through, I actually went through all 42 resumes, looking at all the women, and trying to how, see how any of those were strong enough to rise to the top for us. So, you know, it didn't happen. I did have a couple of questions that I had sent Ray and Associates regarding, um, the five candidates, if they were notified to save this, these three days on their calendar. Because I'm concerned that, I feel like our communication level has been somewhat not quite clear, even though we've had a timeline, we did not get things timely, um, and so...
They were all notified.
Pardon me?
They were all notified.
Um, how were they notified?
Through Ray and Associates.
I know, but via email, text, phone call? Do we know?
I believe by phone.
By phone?
Yes.
Okay. Um, I had another, I had a couple of questions. And then, I was curious, on any of the, these top five, because I don't, I was trying to look and see, I thought I had wrote it down, but I didn't, if any of these candidates were at, in another finalist somewhere else, like, where are they at in that process anymore? Do we, because I'm, I, I am in fear that we're going to lose someone based on them getting a job offer, and then we're down to two, or maybe one, and then it's process of elimination. And we, we had that happen with this, the interim, and, and I, so I'm trying to really avoid that. Do we know?
I believe, uh, Mr. Gall was in one of them.
In Illinois.
Illinois, somewhere up, yeah, up north.
Okay. And...
May I?
Yes.
I thought they addressed that for us, and they said that we are, if, if they're a finalist someplace else, we are ahead of those searches. So, I, I, if I recall correctly...
Right.
Ray and Associates addressed that with us when we were going through the top 10. You look confused.
It is what they said.
Well, and I, is, can I, may I? I'm sorry, through the chair. But I actually found an article where he was, on, he interviewed, um, in the top finalists on, in, I think it was Decatur, Alabama, on January 6th.
Illinois.
Oh, it's Decatur, Illinois, okay. Wrong, wrong Decatur.
Yeah.
Yeah, or, or wrong state, but, so there, but that was, like, Mr. Gall?
No, no, I know, but, but I thought that Ray and Associates told us that about him, and told us the same thing about other candidates. They are engaged in another process, but we're ahead of them.
Okay.
So, I think, I think Gall was the only one who, who was engaged in a process that was ahead of us.
Oh, okay, I got you. I, I misunderstood.
Sorry, not explaining myself well.
Okay, thanks.
Bernier, wasn't it, who was actually Polk County, but rejected, they chose someone else.
Yep.
But he was a finalist, I believe, in Polk.
I, and I thought that Mr. Ramirez was also a finalist in Polk.
No.
Am I getting that confused?
I don't remember that.
I think he said this was his only, um...
I mean, that was prior to the, it was a while ago. Not recent, not, not hired someone. So...
So, so then, do you have any more questions?
Oh, I think, that was it, that was the, the, who was still running, who was still in the, uh, running somewhere else, that was all I had, just an update on that.
So, then, are you comfortable moving, moving ahead with the three finalists?
Sure.
So, that is, um, five out of the seven of us are comfortable moving ahead with the three, um, that we chose yesterday in workshop, and, um, two would like to take another look at Mr. Perry, so, Ms. Vaughn?
Yeah, and, and I've said I'm comfortable with the three, however, I just wanted, if there was the appetite for that, to take another look at him, because I thought he was, um, somebody that deserved a second, a second look anyway, if, if that's, you know, what the board felt, and, um, there's, I'm not sure if it's, you can cut me off if it's not appropriate. Um, on Dr., on Dr. Ramirez, I was looking at specific dates, um, involved in, in Broward County, and, um, newspaper articles, and, and that sort of thing, and, um, he was hired at his, um, shoot, I just forgot, is it, is he the one in Vegas? No, he's in Denver.
Denver, Colorado.
Denver, okay. About the time, you know, the whole Runsey thing, and, you know, the big scandal, and...
Yeah, he went to Denver.
And, and that, that's the only thing that, frankly, it, it was another concern, and I don't know how we can really look at it, if he decided to leave at that time, because it's right there, um...
In May of 2019.
May 2019.
Right.
And he started the new school year in, in Denver. He was, found an article where he was announced.
Yes.
And it just makes me wonder, was he involved in any way? Or, the good thing would be, if he saw handwriting on the wall and said, oh, this, I don't want anything to do with, with this. And, um, Broward has had a few issues, haven't they?
Well, they're, you know, they're a big, they're 275,000 students.
Well, what I'm saying is, they've had a few issues following Parkland and, and all of that, and I just, I couldn't find anything that was damning about him. I just, you know, one of the big things I want to see with our new superintendent is integrity. Somebody asked me that earlier, and I said integrity. And I'll be honest, the prior administration, I feel, um, this, my personal opinion, made a lot of, um, very questionable choices in appointing leadership, and, uh, there, there were some times when I was pushing for, um, audits, including forensic audits, and it seemed like the powers that be, which has never been me on, on this school board, I've always been in the minority, um, there, there was pushback on looking at anything, you know, we have, for better, well, no, not for better or worse, for worse, we have a reputation in this district of retaliation and retribution, and it's been over and over again, and I'm just putting it out there honestly, and many of you already know that it has nothing to do with elections, because I'm not running again. So, what I say is, nothing having to do with anything political, but we have that reputation as a district for retaliation, retribution, um, for the good old boy network, and promoting people that are friends of friends, and, um, it, that's one thing I do not, even though I'm not going to be here past November, I don't want to see that for this school district, school district where I worked for eight years in Estero High School, where my grandson, where my granddaughter graduated, my grandson is still a student, I don't want to see it for our community.
Right.
And if there is any, any little bit that one of our candidates has been involved in something, not on the up and up, to put it nicely, I really don't want that candidate. So, that's why I brought the whole thing up, and I'm not trying to, as I said, the man could be a saint, and he could have said, I'm leaving, because I'm distancing myself from this nonsense, or...
Yes, and I believe he said he was...
That's where I'm coming from.
Yeah, I believe he said he was invited to Denver. And I, you know, for various reasons, we are here now, looking for a new superintendent, a new leader, and so, we have gone through an extensive process, including the community, and have had an opportunity to, uh, check on the references and Google people. So, I think that the three we have are our top three, and so, I, I would ask at this time if we can, if have more, if we don't have any more comments, if we can have consensus to move forward with the three, uh, at tonight's meeting. So, and, Ms. Jordan, did you have a comment?
Thank you, I just had one comment to, for, if, if I may, regarding what Ms. Vaughn was saying. Uh, I did speak to the superintendent of Cordova, and she clearly said to me, he was her, the first person she thought about when she was, when she was set out, when she took the position in Denver, was to get him out there with her, and to be part of, of her team.
Yes.
And she came from where?
She, she, I don't know where she came from, she told me, she's the superintendent of Denver.
Right.
Public schools, and she said to me that he was the first person that, um, she thought about, because he is the connector with people, building and resolving conflict. He hits the ground running, and, um, he has fresh perspectives, and he's, she worked with him two years there before she moved on to another position. That was, she said she invited him there because she wanted that.
She came from Broward.
Yeah.
So, I think that we have an opportunity, when we interview these people in person, to get a, another look at them in a different environment, and then to be able to see them with community members. So, uh, any other comments before we take consensus? Ms. Giavennelli?
So, I, I got an answer back regarding my couple of questions, because I sent them to Ray and Associates, um, that the five are aware of the upcoming interview, um, dates, and that, uh, the, there were two that were actually involved in the searches, and one is, was Mr. Gall, as we stated earlier, and the other one is Mr. Ramirez.
Okay.
So, he is involved in another, another, um...
He is.
She says, involved in other searches. So, that means multiple, I would say.
Okay.
So, there's your answers.
Thank you.
Okay. So, then, at this time, do we have consensus to move forward, uh, on this evening, to vote for, um, the three as the finalists? Okay. Ms. Gittens?
I can live with it.
So, we've got, okay, yes, Ms. Morgan?
Ms. Gittens.
Ms. Gittens.
Ms. Gittens.
Yes, I'm here. I will live with it.
Okay, so we have four go for it, and three will live with it. So...
That's a 7-0 consensus for yes.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. Next on the agenda is board member comments or reports, and the time is 3:43. So, um, Ms. Giavennelli?
Well, the superintendent's not here, so, and I'll just bring it to the board's attention at this point. Um, I received, uh, a call regarding teachers are having, because of the food shortage, that the teachers are having to bring their own lunch, um, and not, unable to eat lunches at schools. And I don't know which school they, I wasn't given the details of that, uh, and I, uh, I'm alarmed, because the whole food thing is such an issue. Um, but I'm happy to report, on the other side of it, that my granddaughter is very pleased with her lunch menu, and so, um, she's not complaining this week, so, she gave me a thumbs up. So, there's that. So, that's all I have right now. Thank you.
Okay, Ms. Patrica?
I have questions for the superintendent, and I like to give my reports now, because I don't want to keep us any later than we have to at night. Um, and I hear him coming.
Yep.
Thank you. Fantastic. Okay, uh, well, my report to the board is that I, I think I told you, I spoke at the Estero Rotary Club, they are tremendous supporters of our kids, and this kind of leads into the first comment that I wanted to make, for the benefit of the board and the superintendent, they are desperate to get back in our schools, and, um, the, the benefit that our children... And the benefit that our children receive by having volunteers in our schools, and I think the benefit for the community to see what's happening in our schools. We have to at some point start to wonder when that benefit outweighs the risk of, of spreading the disease. So, you know, I was talking to a mom who's, who can't go to her child's National Junior Honor Society induction ceremony. And this is a mom who has two kids at the school and they go to school all day, every day and interact with each other. And then they go home and they interact with mom and dad and then mom and dad can't go into the school, even though they've been interacting with the kid who's been exposed to everything in the school. It just doesn't seem to make any sense. It's devastating for these parents to not be able to see their kids go through these sort of rites of passage. And it's devastating for the kids to not be able to have their parents there to celebrate these milestones with them. And we talked two weeks ago, Dr. Savage, when you showed us those spikes. And my concern that with each new spike comes a new spike of mental illness. And, and would, would allowing families and the community to, to get back engaged with our kids in our schools, would that help us to combat some of the mental illness issues that we're seeing in our schools? Where's the balance? Where's the balance between protecting against the spread of the disease and providing providing the education that our kids need and the environment that our kids need? I, I know that there's no science to this, but I fear that as this pandemic goes on, it's getting, it's getting worse and worse and our community can only take so much. So I wanted to say that out loud because I promised parents who have been calling me with these concerns that I would bring it to your attention publicly. And I know we've had the conversation privately as well. So do you have a response or do you just want to take it?
Absolutely. No, I, well, I really appreciate it. Kind of in a microcosm captures a lot of what we've had to deal with since the beginning of the pandemic. It's, it's all a balancing act. I think one of the things we do know, I met, you mentioned it wasn't research based, but the reality for us is we know that for the vast majority of our students, the interpersonal experiences they get in a live learning environment in person without masks is pretty significant. It's a pretty important part of their developmental journey. And a lot of our students have been robbed of that normalcy for over two years. So it's, it's a pretty significant issue for us. And so everything is kind of a balancing act. I will say, I was looking at the, the data you were talking about earlier today. And, you know, I'm cautiously optimistic because those numbers were actually starting to head down. And that's kind of the key with these surges is you want to know when you're at the peak of the mountain. And you also want to know, do you see these little residual peaks or not? So, so there are some positive signs relative to studying the, the incidents that are being recorded in terms of how many infections we have. That's a positive. The other thing that the pandemic team meets very regularly on this very topic is the balancing act. And so as this number comes down, if it does come down as precipitously as it rose, that's really powerful opportunity for us to get down to lower transmission levels, not just here in Florida, but really across the whole country. So I would say hopefully two weeks from now, we're in a much better situation than where we are. But I will take all of the specific asks that are out there. I had an earlier ask this morning on that with the Executive Foundation Board about some of their specific academic supports too as well. And we're going to bring that back to the pandemic team with some of these, this conversation. And not to mention, we have to think about the future. If we have to live with this type of thing, where is that balancing act? And I think we're, that's, that's a part of our decision making moving forward as well.
So like, so the Astero people said, we're willing to wear a mask, we're willing to show that we're vaccinated, we're willing to show tests that we're negative. And I know that the law doesn't permit us to require that of our, of our volunteers. But I say that to you so that you understand the steps they're willing to take to just get in our schools. And, and sort of the, the plea that's out there in our community. So I'll leave it at that. My next concern is buses and the impact on learning time. It's so funny because there was an irony for me in the weekly board update that we, we have this big poster and this big push for absenteeism and then so many of our kids are absent because they, they can't ride a bus to school. It's, it's, I mean, I'm, I say that, I say to Jack all the time and I say to parents all the time, I am in this boat with you. I cannot tell you how many times my sons have called me from the bus stop in the morning, the bus didn't show up. Or the bus is so late that I can't get to school on time or whatever. And I have a husband and we have cars that we can bring them. But my patience is running really, really, really thin. Like, it's taking me a lot. I, I will say that I probably do a little bit of yelling and say some words in my house in the morning that I would never say here at the dais because my patience is really running thin. And it's hard for me to, to continue to build up the public and have them keep those reserves of patience when I don't have them myself. It's just, and it's not just that my patience is running thin. It's that the number of students out there who don't have a mom or a dad that can drive them to school and are not going to school as a result. I talked to a teacher who went out and drove, went, left the school and went and picked a kid up and brought the kid to school so that the kid wouldn't have another absence. And we only have so many teachers who can do that. We've got to find a solution to, I don't know what the solution is. But we've got to find a solution that's going to, I mean, to push for lack of absenteeism on one hand and then have buses not picking up on kids on the other hand, it's just, it's counterintuitive and it's like a slap in the face, to be honest with you. That was my next comment. Next comment is, are we doing anything new in the ELL realm? So I read the board member update and it was all very nothing really innovative there. It was, you know, we're teaching kids vocabulary words and we're, we're you know, doing MTSS and nothing really innovative there. Again, I was speaking with an employee in one of the buildings who's desperate, desperate to help her ELLs. And I suggested that she take a trip to one of our international centers. But this was an elementary school teacher, so I'm not sure how well that will translate down to elementary. But I know we had had a conversation at one point about scaling up those international centers to, to be more present throughout the district. What are we doing in that realm? Could you please provide us an update beyond the sort of plain vanilla stuff that we're getting each week in the board member updates? And if, I need the board to direct you to do that. I'll do it if you think it'll take more than an hour and a half. Board member questions. So I had asked whether ESER III funds can be used to update technology in the boardroom. I did not see that as an outstanding question in board member questions. And I'm, I'm concerned that some of my questions are falling off and are not in the board member question weekly thing. I'm going to go back through my emails and my notes and see what hasn't been answered. But if ESER III funds can't be used, I'd like to have a conversation with the board. Go ahead.
So Ms. Patrica, you had asked me the same question as well and I didn't have a chance yet to send you a response. The, I contacted Ms. Kennedy and the ESER III funds are very, very specific
Okay.
to COVID. So we can't apply, there's an application process internally, the committee meets and they make a decision. But based on my, what I was reviewing, I'm not sure that will fit the definition for this. And I did argue about Zoom and I don't think it's going to fit.
All right. So then is there an update on the board to direct the superintendent to come forward with some proposals to increase or improve bringing technology into the current era? I can't call on you.
Ms. Morgan?
Yeah, so actually I've asked the superintendent's office to provide information about the surplus funds in the superintendent's account and surplus funds in the board account because you know, we have discretionary funds, both the superintendent's office and the board office. And I'd like to know if there are sufficient funds there to do it. So I've asked that question.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Giavinelli?
And the board office was shut down for the month of July. What did they do then? I thought that was to upgrade this. So for better communication and for our calling, calling in and, and so forth. So what it actually was done, I would like to know what was done then and how much that cost.
So am I getting a sense that we can ask the superintendent to take a look at this, figure out what it's going to cost and where the money will come from?
Yes, absolutely.
Would you call for a consensus, please?
Yes. Okay, consensus on asking the superintendent? Oh, yes, Ms. Gittens.
Do I get to make the comment on that?
Yes, ma'am.
Well, I was just going to say, I'm not sure what the consensus is. I don't know what the consensus is just to look into it. But the consensus should also include what Ms. Giavinelli was saying and what we mentioned before, what was prior to with the technology and how much it costs.
Okay.
And that was what I, I'm sorry, she can't see me, so she didn't know that I was pointing to Ms. Giavinelli saying to include that. So yes.
Yes. And, and there's agreement with, with you on that also. So at this time, we'll take a consensus to direct the superintendent to look into the technology in the communications department to get us better equipped to do Zoom meetings, et cetera. Okay.
And I just want to I want to reiterate, as I finish that, that piece of my comments, that this is not about having new shiny things. This is about the number of hours staff had to spend to prepare us.
Oh, yeah.
And the number of hours staff has to prepare, spend to prepare to, to try to fit this old technology into a new world. I think it's far more efficient, it may be far more efficient based on the numbers that come forward. May I finish with my comments? I only have two left. The district impact report is fantastic.
Excuse me, let me just finish.
You didn't take the consensus?
Yeah, yeah, I, yes, I'm just, I, I'm sorry. Before Mrs. Patrica finishes with her comments, I'm going to take the consensus. And I see that we are six and Ms. Gittens, I'm asking you.
Yes.
Yes, okay. We have a consensus, seven to one.
Thank you. The district
Seven to zero.
Seven to zero.
The district impact report is fantastic. I love that thing. And I don't know who does it, but whoever did it, thank you very much. And the public really loves these too. I leave them on my coffee table in my living room. And everybody that walks in my house looks through it and asks me questions. And I also hand them out when I go out and whatever. Public really loves them. They're very informational. Finally, I do want to respond to the email, the comment regarding email. The emails that came in regarding the superintendent were sent to all board members. So we all received those emails. If I receive an email about an, an issue that's going to come before the board for a discussion or a vote, I will reply and copy board members so that we're all privy to the same information. I think more information is, is better for all board members. So, you know, it's, it's not a matter of not believing somebody. It's not a matter of any of that. It's just a matter of please be, please include me so that I can be privy to the same. You know, some, some people will read an email one way, some people will read an email the other way. I'm getting a sense that there's a real passion amongst some of our constituents that I'm unaware of. And I would just like to be privy to that. That's really all this is about. Those are my comments for now. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Ms. Jordan?
I really don't have any comments. Just thank you all for the hard work that all of, all of you have been doing. And, oh, and then Ms. Carol from, my goodness, Capital Strategy, she's working out a, a timeline for us
Okay.
to visit.
Okay. Mrs. Gittens, do you have some comments? Mrs. Gittens, do you have comments?
Yes, I do, but I was trying to, I need I need to mention about the audit committee, if I may mention that. We had a, another meeting with RSM. And where that is at this point is the audit committee and RSM looked at their, their statement of work. We have a copy, we will get that actually in the next day or so and make sure that all the board members get the updated statement of work and the plan for them going forward. What, what the audit committee is asking is that at next briefing, if we could possibly get some time at the next briefing at our next meeting, because this time sensitive. For two of the board members, the chair, Mr. Paul Cohen and Mr. Davis, Jesse Davis, to come and RSM, Claire Ewing would be on by, on Zoom. Mr. Davis, his primary job is doing audits. So he is very familiar with what we're doing. And what maybe wants to do is to approve a two phased audit. And the first part would be phase one, the IT or information technology risk assessment and combined audit with risk assessment. There are comments where that the last IT assessment was done three years ago. And the way that technology is advancing and so quickly, there could be a risk that we are not even aware of. And that this will determine what else we need to do and where we need to start. And then phase two would be after the IT risk assessment, if you choose to do it with RSM, that the committee would also look at their findings and be willing to report from their vantage point what that report is really saying. And this is coming from people that are experts in the field. So first off, we will get you all the, the information and the updated SOW from RSM. And then if we can get on the briefing for the next meeting, the first meeting in February. Because if it goes well, they would be willing to start in March. And the committee is very anxious to see if the board will go ahead and do this, that we need to get started. Are there any questions on that?
Ms. Vaughn?
Uh, yeah, last, do you know if the meetings have been posted online yet? The last time I looked, and it's, it's been maybe 10 days ago, I didn't see anything online from audit committee. Do you know or do you know who is responsible for that?
I will check into it. It was, it was recorded and I believe it should be out there, but I will check and make sure.
No, I wasn't able to get it.
That, that would be, my goodness, who is it in finance? Who's, Ms. Gittens, who?
No, I know, I'm darn level, but I will check into it if you don't mind. And I will get back to you all and make sure you have the link to it.
Okay, if in fact there is a link. Because I, I mean, it needs
It was, it was recorded. I did ask to be sure. And supposedly it was recorded, but I, like I said, I don't have an answer for you right now. I will have to make sure of that.
No, I'm, I'm just curious about it. There, wouldn't it be, I guess, ask Dr. Savage through the chair, through the vice chair. Isn't there, is there one person that's responsible for posting all the other advisories?
Ms. Vaughn, I have that information. I work with the person that actually puts them up. So I will check and make sure if that's been put up. I, I'm saying I can get the answer. We don't have to, you know, engage someone else into finding the answer.
Well, I'm only engaging someone else because I'm thinking about all of the things that need to be put up for public record and not only for public, but those of us here on the board that don't have an opportunity. You know, I mean, we go to the ones we're assigned as a liaison. So I'm not putting it on you and it shouldn't be on you as the liaison. It's on whoever is assigned to do that. And I don't know who that is. And that's what I'm trying to determine.
But I do, is what I am saying to you. And I will check with them and see if there was an issue with it or if it's up. And I will make sure you get the link.
Thank you, Mrs. Gittens. We appreciate that. Do you have any further comments?
Um, can I get an answer or something about moving forward with once you guys get an opportunity to look at the information? Can we get it put on the briefing agenda for our next meeting so we can move along with this?
May I can't understand what she said. She wants to get She wants to get the Audit Committee and the RSM representative on the briefing agenda for the first meeting in February.
Okay.
Okay, Superintendent is making a note of that?
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you.
And my, my other, I know the time is moving on, but my other comment, I don't just repeat things or say things just to hear myself speak. When I bring things up multiple times, it's because things are not particularly being done correctly or right, and I am bringing attention to that. And as a board member, I have that ability as well. And I'll leave my other comments until this evening. Thank you.
Much.
I have a couple of things I forgot.
Okay, one second. Mrs. Morgan, did you have a comment?
No, I'll, I'll make my comment in my comments then.
Okay, all right.
Thank you.
Mrs. Jivinelli.
Real quick, I had a couple of service announcements that I wanted to bring up. The Edison Festival Light, and so I don't have to do it tonight. So the Edison Festival Light Parade is coming up the 13th of February, and that's the junior parade, and then the night parade is the 19th, and our schools will participate. We have the bands in, in other, other schools. I think Northwood Myers Academy of the Arts puts always their drum, their drum thing in. Also, I sent everybody an email regarding the science fair judges needed, and I just thought I'd circle back around and make sure y'all saw my email. They're, they're in need, and you can register, and then you can, it's all done virtually this year, and last year they did it, too, that way. And then I am in need of Insurance Task Force, my meeting is next, the third, at 3:00, and will be in FSBA or Tallahassee. So I, there's two people that are not going, and I was seeing if one of you would like to go to that meeting on the third at 3:00 P.M.
Let's see, I'll do it for you.
Ms. Vaughn said she would.
Oh, okay.
It's up to y'all.
Thank you.
It's up for grabs.
Okay. I'll do it.
That's it, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, so just have that, the person send me the info so it can get on my calendar.
Yes.
Or send it.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, and now Ms. Vaughn, you have comments?
First of all, I, I want to ask, and this is going back to something Mrs. Patrico was asking about, the, the volunteers in, in the schools. On Thursday, I'm the liaison to Learning for Life, and I'm going to a Learning for Life meeting, and I know that the first thing Tina's going to ask me is, can we get back in the schools? When can we get back in the schools? So, Dr. Savage, what, what answer shall I give her?
I will be happy to take that question to the pandemic team. I know that on a case-by-case basis, they've had to look anything that has an educational value. It's a risk reward, as we kind of talked about earlier, risk benefit, however you want to frame it. And so that's something I'll certainly bring to the pandemic team. Obviously, I think you're all aware, we're at the highest level of infections we've ever had. That's just a mitigating issue here. It's obviously, well, the lower level of hospitalizations and death rate. We do know that from child age, that it, that isn't necessarily the same case as it was. So I, it just, it's, I don't want to on the spot make that comment. I'd rather have the team, and then we'll put a nice written response, and then a time parameter on when that will be reviewed again. I just wanted to give the optimism of the downswing that we are seeing, and I hope it stays that way.
I'm sure most people, most people know Tina Pegler, and, and she, I just want to, I just want to go in with an answer. So will you make a note about that particular, the Learning for Life, since it is very much so educational and of great value to the kids? And I will tell her, Dr. Savage is taking care, taking care of it, so I do have an answer for her. Okay, another question that I have, and this is really for my colleagues here. I know I'm not going to Tallahassee, and I'm curious, who are the people going to Tallahassee? I understand it's four, and I know that, you know, we have our legislative priorities, but it seems to me, especially based on some of the things that Ashley sent out, and I have one in particular in mind from a member of our local delegation, that I, I would like to see asked, and, and I was also curious, I had emailed Ashley back and asked her about what had been set up for those who were going, and I, I didn't hear back. And, and so Ms. Jordan said that that's being set up right now. The big, the big thing that I would like to see mentioned is, even though it wasn't his bill that our local delegate, Spencer Roach, put forward, the elected superintendent bill that's coming out of his committee, his subcommittee. It was, what's her name, Maluka Persons?
Yeah,没有人
Persons, yeah.
没有人
It was her bill, but she, as Ashley said, she had another obligation at that time, so he put it forward, and that, that's a huge, huge concern going forward, especially for huge districts like ourselves, the possibility that somebody, and apparently the local people are thinking of a certain somebody, that wants to be an elected superintendent, and it becomes very political, it becomes popularity or whatever, and we could get with an elected superintendent, if that were to pass, you know, it has to get on the ballot first, but I'll bet it will, somebody who's never even been in a classroom, somebody that has never had any kind of the expertise that a superintendent needs from, from budget to operations to academics. So is there, what I'm asking is, is there a possibility, even though it's not one of our big legislative priorities, that if anyone gets to talk to that particular local representative, that, and, and I'm assuming it's a concern, am I, am I wrong with, with that? I, I can't, but, can Ms. Patrico speak?
Ms. Patrico. You may be wrong. You're not wrong in my mind.
Okay.
I do think that if we were to speak to this as a board, we would need consensus.
Right.
That we are against it. I will tell you that I am working on a memo to provide to the board with data to support the position that an elected superintendent is not the right way to go. I've not yet finished with all the data compilation and making it look pretty, but I was going to send it to the board and ask for consensus that we adopt that position as a board, and I think the, the real education piece of it is important because it's going through. You know, there's, I, I don't think we can stop it at this point. From what I understand, the, the business community, the higher education community is very much against it because they understand the tremendous negative impact on the, the school system if we make it more political than it already is. And I will add to the list of people that could become superintendent are the type that want to see public education fail.
Absolutely.
And that's really my biggest concern. So I just wanted you to know where I am in the process. If we were to take a consensus so that we can discuss it with our legislators when we're up there, I would be a thumbs up on that.
Madam Vice Chair.
Yes.
Is that appropriate at this point, that if someone on this, on this board, and I'm guessing that most of the people, for what I consider the obvious reasons of those that sit here and know the complexities of that job, would want to say something?
Right, and Ms. Jordan?
And I do have, thank you for, if you pull on stuff together, but I also have a, a lot of information regarding small versus large counties versus everybody, a lot, a lot of information that I asked to be sent to me about a month ago when I very first heard this. So I'll be more than happy to share that out with all of you as well, so that you will have all that information.
If you would share it with me so that I can include it.
Yep, absolutely will.
And then I'll send it to the whole board.
Thank you. That's great.
Yeah, and, and Florida and Alabama are the only two states in the Union that allow for an elected superintendent of schools. And we stopped having an elected superintendent in Lee County in 1974.
Right.
And although there are about 30 districts in Florida that have elected superintendents, you know, the smaller districts, all of the larger districts, and the most successful districts have a, an appointed superintendent. So, I mean, I agree that if there's an opportunity to talk to someone in Tallahassee, I would appreciate that being done, and.
Ms. Chair.
Yes, Ms. Gittens.
Yeah, I, my comment about it is that if we have all of these comments about why it wouldn't be good, I would be interested to know from those that are pushing, putting it forward, what are their, what's their rationale, if they are willing to state that openly, why? We have all the reasons we're not, and I would just like to hear their why.
On the Florida Channel.
Yeah.
I mean, it's, it's been, it's been in front of committees, and.
Now, I, I understand that, but I'm, I'm not talking about when we go to Tallahassee, that to have questions, so they tell us in response to what we may be saying, what, you know, yes, I can watch that on TV. I'm talking about the meetings that we have when we go up there.
Yeah. So, so that, that, that will be something that you'll have an opportunity to speak with, and Mrs.
Thank you, Ms. Fisher. Supreme Bruno.
If this is going to be part of the formal legislative priorities position, this is a formal position of the board, then I would ask that it be an action vote. So you can take a consensus to move it forward, but an action vote to make sure that the board is speaking, you know, in one, one voice on this particular topic.
Madam Chair, I would like to see all the information prior to an action vote.
She wants to see all of the information before an action vote.
Okay, Ms. Jivinelli.
And, and I would agree as well. I haven't made my decision on this exactly, but I have to ask and say, it's called about accountability, you know, and how we got here and why they want to do it. I think we need to ask ourselves on this board, why do they want to have an elected superintendent? It's because of our actions in the past and what we've done or not done, and not held people accountable, including the prior superintendent, when things weren't done legally. So the reason why it's, it is on the ballot is, is going to get on the ballot, because I'm, I'm hearing it's moving swiftly and it's going forward. So, so yes, I'm alarmed over it, but it's because of what we haven't done as a board, our job and our duty. So we need to take ownership in that when it becomes, on, it gets on the ballot in November. Thank you.
Right, and it's on the ballot for the whole state?
No.
No, it's just, this is just our district.
Our district.
It's just Lee County.
Okay.
So that, I mean, that speaks volumes, and that's what we need to be talking about.
Okay, so.
So I, to fini, to finish up real, real quickly, and I, I didn't, frankly, I didn't think far enough into our discussion when I, when I brought it up, because it is a hot-button issue, but I, I brought it up mainly because I was hoping that some of you who got a chance to speak with, especially Spencer Roach, since he was the one that moved this forward, I know, that you could even express your personal view, and then I'm hoping that this might be a workshop topic, something that we can move forward, because one other thing, if I, I hadn't looked at this in a while, but if I remember correctly, there's some little county in the Panhandle, isn't there, that was completely taken over?
Jefferson.
Jefferson.
Is it Jeff, Jefferson? Okay, and I believe that was an elected superintendent? So, anyway, to fi, to finish it up, on a, on a really positive note, I, I was the, the board person who was assigned, happily assigned for this past weeks, a week ago, the Do the Right Thing ceremony from the sheriff's office, and I know my board colleagues have all had that opportunity, and it is, it's just a bright light to, to do that, and to see the kids sitting up here in our, our seats, and, you know, it, it was the whole gamut of kids from, I think there were at least two kindergarteners, and one kindergarten boy was, I, I didn't get my wish for this one thing. One kindergarten boy was really very petite, and, and it went through a senior in high school, like a young man that, I don't know if he played football, but he was a very mature-looking senior, and I really wanted a picture, it probably wouldn't have been correct, or, I really, really wanted a picture of that really tiny boy in kindergarten with this really tall, like A to Z, you know, we have the full, but it really was the full, full gamut, and the kids were so excited, and, and there was one young man who attends Buckingham, and when he finally came up to get his award, he just couldn't contain himself. He was brimming over, giggling, and just so excited. And I think, I think one of the wonderful things is that all of our students can, you know, there, we have so many kids that get all the accolades, and they win everything in, in their school, and then there's some that rarely get recognized, and there were some, you know, things like great helpers and always going out of their way and being a pal to somebody who was disabled, and a couple of them who found money and picked it up and brought it to the teacher, and, and so in all the things we, we do, it's always when we have, can celebrate with, with the kids, and I hadn't been probably, actually, it's been for a while. I don't know if they weren't doing it for a while during COVID, but it, it was, it was really a, a great experience and a spirit lifter to see the proud parents and the kids just brimming over with excitement. And those are my comments.
Thank you very much. Okay, Ms. Morgan.
Yeah, I only have, well, no, I actually now have a couple of comments. My first comment has to do with procurement. I happened to be in an event, and someone who is in the construction industry and in fact has done renovation and building in our schools offered what I thought was a great compliment. She said, "I wish every school district handled contracts and the process for bids the way Lee County does." Lee County absolutely has set the standard for the construction industry in terms of making it easy for them to access information, to be informed about where they are in the process. So, you know, I just, passing that on. So I'm sorry there's nobody here from procurement, but I, I hope, Dr. Savage, you will pass that on. Thank you. In, in response to a couple of things that have been said at the board table just recently, first of all, I would like to say in support of what Ms. Vaughn was trying to say, I think, is that board members should not be directing staff. Board members should be directing the superintendent to direct staff, and if there is. And if there is a, a failure on the part, or not a failure, if there's a misunderstanding about something, that needs to go to the superintendent, for the superintendent to deal with staff and find out where the issues are. The second comment I'm going to make is that by statute, every board member represents the entire school district. Board members are not, even the single-member district board members are not elected as the only voice, or the primary voice of a particular district. We are all responsible for making decisions about what takes place in each of the districts. So, those are my comments. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Okay, and I have two announcements to make. On Saturday morning at 7:00 AM, if you want to get warm, you have an opportunity to go to two 5Ks. One is the Drug Free Coalition Prevention Run at JC Park in Cape Coral.
I was like tempted with the intro, I was like, get warm, I want to go. And then run outside, no, I don't think so.
And then the other one is the Sheriff's Youth Activities League, and they'll be running in your neighborhood, Ms. Patrico.
Oh, really?
At the Estero Community Park. And so, just be there at 7:00, and I'm sure you'll have an opportunity to run and get heated up. I just want to say thanks to all of our employees, students, and parents for continuing to keep the nose to the grindstone and do what we can do to keep kids in school and healthy in spite of all the challenges that came along with the pandemic. And now, Ms. Vaughn. So, we are going to take a consensus and bring it to a vote at tonight's meeting for Good of the Order, or?
I think, I think that Ms. Gittens said she wanted to see the information prior to.
Okay.
So did I.
All right, okay, so then we, okay.
Yeah, but, but, um, I will retract that, but just go ahead. I, I don't know, because if I do that, then you won't be able to vote for how long or what.
On Tuesday, we have a special meeting for the superintendent during Good of the Order at that meeting.
Right.
When is it?
Tuesday.
Tuesday, and we all leave, I leave Tuesday night. I think everybody else leaves Wednesday, so it's before we go to Tallahassee.
So, Madam Chair, if I can make a recommendation?
Yes.
I think Ms. Patrico said that she was working on, let me move this closer to me. Ms. Patrico said that she was working on some documents, so if the board wants to give her formal direction to please go ahead and finish those documents, provide that, and then, so you can have your formal vote on it on Tuesday.
Yeah.
And then also, the, may I say, the information that Ms. Jordan said she has as well?
She already sent it.
Okay, so we will vote on it on Tuesday. And thank you, Ms. Patrico and Ms. Jordan. Okay. Board Attorney comments? Mr. Dupree Bruno?
I have none, thank you very much.
Superintendent's comments?
Yes, Madam Vice Chair, I just have, trying to, a few, a few answers have come in, but before I read those ones, just, and I've mentioned it earlier with Ms. Gittens earlier, but then also, Ms. Patrico had a number of questions kind of lined out there. So, just from a staff organization standpoint, we try every week to really provide, not just the update, but really answers to a lot of the board member questions. In some cases, we, we really want them to be put in writing so that everyone gets the same information with whatever pertinent backup information. And what I would ask is that if those answers, if you, if you get an answer or attempt to answer what we thought we heard in terms of your question, and it's insufficient, my ask would be, clarify that for us. Say, hey, here's the question that you answered, this really wasn't exactly what I wanted, I wanted more information. But it's important if we reference the information, the back and forth, just because it, staff goes through a lot of work in order to compile and pull it together, and, and that's just very important as a way of work, so that it's respectful time to have them sit here and wait maybe through three hours of conversation, and then the one minute that maybe they could answer, I think is just not efficient with their time. So, getting those answers in writing is really the preferred method, and then for those ones that we have to expound on and go much, much deeper in a presentation, take comment, those are, those are great. But really utilizing that, that weekly communication tool. So, just a few of the answers that they, folks have sent me while I've been sitting here. So, the, the earlier question about who works with the advisory liaisons, Mary Reader is, is that one consolidated person who works with each of the advisor, advisory liaisons to ensure that minutes and recordings are posted? So, that's one piece. Ms. Morgan had a question regarding the budget, the business finance for the superintendent's board office. That is being worked on, and that was noted in the most, in the 1/21st, the most recent board update. That is information that is being worked on currently. From Communications, they do post those advisory committee meetings on YouTube, but they haven't been sent the video for the Audit Committee. So, that's why that one has not been posted. Earlier, there's a question around the Fort Myers Technical College Annex that is coming to a briefing soon. They do anticipate the Site Selection Committee giving their recommendation next week. It looks like the first briefing opening will be late March, so they'll have an update and a weekly update as soon as they have that agreement in place, and then you can look forward to that in March for a briefing. As well as just, the videos have to be sent to Communications so that they can post to YouTube. So, that was on that piece. There, for the other aspects, the ELL-related piece, the transportation, you know, just for the ELL, be happy to try to provide a little bit more of a robust response. That's a real opportunity for folks to, to speak to. It's a very important area, so I will make sure that feedback is shared, that it, what we've provided so far has not really been enough.
Can I, can I just say that I don't want that to have come across as accusatory if I said it? I know that sometimes people misinterpret what I say. I was not being accusatory, I was just, I know the 47% increase in ELLs over the past five years, and I'm concerned about it, and it came up in my superintendent conversations, which is why I brought it up today. So, please don't think, don't let staff think that I'm saying you're not doing your job, you're not doing enough. I just, I want to see if we can be more innovative there. Sorry to interrupt you, but.
No, that's, that's quite all right. That's, and the last one, which was just that transportation piece. Obviously, you know, transportation is a huge issue for us, but it's a huge issue really everywhere. It's a major, major, major issue across the country. And again, in our particular area, with Amazon coming, we love to have Amazon, but that did not help us from the CDL competitive marketplace. That said, you know, I'd be remiss if I didn't mention that one of the ways that we have some self-inflicted wounds in the area of transportation is because of the way we currently run our choice system. We allow, and I'll use an example, in the middle of Lehigh in East Subzone 2, it is factual that there are over 17 buses that go to transport students to 17 different schools in the middle of the East Zone. So, the whole way that, that our tier system contributes, the amount of routes that we have, the folks in transportation have done an unbelievable job in order to manage what they have, but when you're, when you, and it's part of the character of our district is to be a choice district, so in no way would I ever suggest that that needs to be taken away. We love to give parents options. The question is, do you need to have 17 choices in the middle of Lehigh? Is that really something to be outgrown? And that will be a future topic that we'll be bringing up with the Proximity Plan, as just one among many other methods that can help to reduce our overarching demand for bus drivers by being more efficient in that way. Not that that would ever be the purpose, we don't want to diminish the diversity that we have in our schools and the choice, but that there is a balancing act, just like we talked about in all those other aspects. So, that's just the quick piece. We'll have far more to, to offer, and that'll be an ongoing thing that we'll be providing each week. There's a lot of cool incentives and things that we're trying to do, that I'll be happy to share with the board as well about transportation. I'm very pleased that Mr. Lloyd and his team and all of the, the drivers, they're really working very hard to try to address these issues. And they spoke to the principals recently, and it was really, it's, it's, these are complex problems, and they're, they're having to find a lot of creative solutions. So, we'll try to do a better job telling the story of some of that incredible work that's being done. Those are, those are the comments that I have. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, at this time, seeing no further business and seeing no objection, this meeting is adjourned, and we'll be back at 6:00 for the action meeting.